Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Laguna Woods City Council on Wednesday, August 16, 2023. It's nice to see a lot of people here. Nice to have some civic engagement, and you will all have a chance to talk. Everyone who wishes to address us can address us. If you're here to talk to us about cannabis, I'm going to move that item to the beginning of our agenda so that all of you don't have to sit through everything else, although we'd love to have you if you choose to stay. Because we have a lot of people who have asked to speak, I'm going to set a time limit of two minutes per person, and I'll ask the city clerk to be our timekeeper. If you want to talk to us about cannabis, that will be the first item on our agenda. If you want to talk to us about anything else that's not on our agenda, that will come up on item five. If you're here, you should give a little note to the city clerk and tell her you want to speak. If you're attending by phone, you should push star nine, and if you're on Zoom, you should raise your hand, and that way we will know that you want to speak. Madam Clerk, will you call us -- will you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Horn?
Here.
Councilmember McCary?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Hatch?
And Mayor Connors?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember McCary, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Because we have such a lot of people here who want to speak on the cannabis matter, I'm going to ask the council's indulgence in moving item 8.1 to the top of our agenda, and we will do that next. Is there any objection?
No.
Okay. Without objection, then. Chris, would you like to give us a staff report, please?
Yes, absolutely. And my report will be brief. There was a full presentation made in conjunction with the public hearing at last month's meeting on July 19. What I do want to note is that at that meeting on the 19th, the city council voted 3-2 with Mayor Pro Tim Hatch and Councilmember Moore voting no to approve the introduction and first reading of the ordinance that's proposed today. There have been no changes made to the proposed ordinance since that presentation and public hearing last month. If the city council takes the action of adopting -- approving for second reading and adopting the ordinance at today's meeting, it would be effective 10 calendar days after the effective date of an annual application and routine inspection fee for cannabis storefront retailers. That's a fee called for in the ordinance itself. As noted in the staff report, we anticipate that if the city council adopts the ordinance today, we would be in a position to bring the proposed fee before you at your September meeting. 10 days after that was approved, this ordinance would take effect. The recommended action, and I want to caveat it by saying it's not staff's recommendation, but if the city council wishes to proceed with adopting regulations that would permit cannabis retail sales businesses, the action that the city council would take would be to approve second reading and adopt an ordinance read by title with further reading waived, titled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California: Amending Sections 13.06.010, 13.08.010, 13.10.020, 13.12.020, 13.13.020, 13.18.070, and 13.26.025 of Title 13, zoning of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code to establish a regulatory framework for cannabis storefront retailers, set the cannabis business tax rate for cannabis storefront retailers, and clarify the nature of prohibited cannabis businesses and existing regulations pertaining to tobacco and tobacco cigarette sales, and determining and certifying that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act." At today's meeting, there's an opportunity for public comments, and then an opportunity as well for the city council to engage in any discussion or ask any additional questions of staff. As the mayor noted, anyone joining us by telephone can press star nine to indicate their interest in speaking. If you're on Zoom, you can click the raise hand button, and if you're here in the room, you can just let Yoli know at the desk across from me. And with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
We have already had a public hearing on this matter, but there is opportunity for public comment today. And so I'm just going to call you up in the order in which the city clerk received your comment cards. First one is Maureen Metta.
Maureen Metta.
Mailer, thank you. Sorry, Maureen.
I'm back, and I still have spinal stenosis, and I still need to use my medical cannabis. And I do not like driving to Santa Ana. This last week, I sprained my wrist. Don't know how I do it. We'll never know. I could not even turn the ignition on my car, let alone drive. I could have walked to a store if one had been close enough, because there's nothing wrong with my feet, and with the medical cannabis, I can walk and don't hurt my back. So I'm hoping that we will get this passed and through and open while I'm still this side of the daisies.
And Jim Ropel is on deck.
Hi, my name is Erin McCormick. I'm with McCormick &amp; Son Mortuaries, generational business adjacent to one of the properties proposed, from what I understand. I'm here not to oppose or support. I'm here to educate the city a little bit about our property and our industry so that you understand what we do next door and how different industries and zoning may affect our industry. But I wish to bring to light that we are regulated by many agencies, including the Public Health and Environmental Protection Agency, as well as AQMD regarding some of the chemicals we keep on premise. I'll just, as an example for one, formaldehyde is made up of ethanol, methanol. That is a chemical we use regularly and produce, not easy to obtain, but can be used for a different illicit drug sales, drug use, that do unfortunately come with different types of zonings that needs to be brought to attention. At our facility in Laguna Woods, we have not had, but at other McCormick facilities located near other properties over the years, this has been a constant problem, where these types of things to make illicit drugs do become break-ins and different type of things. We are 24 hours a day. We operate 24 hours a day, and we have deceding care in a very conservative industry that I operate with different religious beliefs, and how that could affect on different zonings that do need to be, I think, taken into consideration. We also act with different federal and state organizations, both with FEMA and Red Cross as a emergency shelter, which needs to be mentioned, because I do notice that in the city regulatory agenda that took place, it was mentioned that certain properties were or needed to be taken under review. I don't think the city as part or the general public realizes how a mortuary under Demort or any of the organizations fall in helping the community on subject matters we don't wish to speak about or think about. Our location in Laguna Beach has been used for these resources. Thank God, in my current, you know, recollection, I do not know when Laguna Woods was, other than during COVID, as the city was very well, very well aware, and many city officials came in when the state emergency response team put and coordinated with us a unit on our property for that emergency response. The amount of influx that came in, both to the mortuary and to the city, and having you guys show up. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration on how we're going to act and how we're going to proceed in our zoning and contacting the other agencies that we do work with already. And I just want to bring these things to light as you guys make your selection to choose zoning. We can be used as a shelter. We can be used as these different things when there is a national disaster, and I don't know if that affects or doesn't affect on how you choose which property or which property location.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you should petition to rename your business McCormick &amp; Daughter.
Oh, I know. It's only two females now that are McCormick here.
Jim Ropel. And next up is Juanita Skilman.
My wife and I are here today in opposition to the cannabis store idea. You know, we have 18,000-plus people who live in the village, and one of the reasons the village is successful is because neighbors who live very close to each other are considerate of each other, and that needs to continue. We have common walls from one residence to the other. We have common attics, and we have common space right outside our doors. When people are not considerate, this causes problems for that area and really for the entire village. I am concerned that that consideration will be affected by people being allowed to access marijuana and smoke it and impact the air that the rest of us breathe. One of my friends recently told me that they could no longer open their windows at their unit because their neighbor was smoking marijuana every day, all day. Now, can you imagine in California, you can't open your windows? That's a real shame. I also want to mention that we have a lot of people in the village who drive, who probably should not drive anymore. I'm one of them, okay, and I don't drive. People drive their cars or their golf carts, and I commonly hear people say, "Oh, I don't drive anymore, but I drive my golf cart." This is a problem and a safety hazard, and we don't need more impaired people driving in the village or even outside of the village. The other thing I want to mention, two other things if I have time, I understand Sheriff Barnes is opposed to this idea. We are lucky in this county to have Sheriff Barnes. He's one of the best sheriffs in the country, and he's been acclaimed as such. If he's opposed to it, perhaps we ought to try listening to our law enforcement professional. The last thing I want to say is, I recently heard a medical researcher on TV, and he made three points that I thought were very, very important. One, the potency of marijuana is much stronger. It has been engineered to be much stronger these days than when I was a teenager in the '60s. Secondly, it is a gateway drug to further more disastrous drugs. And lastly, it does affect your lungs and your brain, and not in a good way. We seem to understand that in this country when it comes to cigarettes, but we seem to be ignoring that when it comes to marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. Juanita Skilman? Hold on, Juanita. Next up, Dave Wheeler.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am here first and foremost to congratulate the city on the thoroughness of this resolution. So much has been taken into account. It covers just about everything anybody could question, and I think that the background that the staff has put in, those types of things, is to be really commended. I'd like to speak just a little bit about gyms. First of all, Laguna Woods Village is a smoke-free. When we're talking about cannabis, we're talking about a lot of things, not just cigarettes. Their smoking of cigarettes, they need to call security. It is against our rules to smoke where other people can find it or smell it, et cetera. So there's a lot more than just cigarettes involved here. We're not outlawing tobacco. Our no-smoke rule specifically details marijuana with tobacco pipes, cigars, and other types of smoking air, pipes. So we need to balance both of those, but I think that this resolution, that our ordinance, excuse me, I get the wrong names here, that you all have done, is really good, and just from a taxpayer point of view, this tax revenue is going to really benefit this city, and we need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Wheeler?
I'll sign you out here.
And next up after Dave is Catherine Freshley.
You may have to hold it.
The microphone doesn't seem to want to accommodate my height. Hello, my name is Dave Wheeler. I'm the mayor pro tem of your neighboring city, Laguna Hills, and I've come here to address you about the cannabis, and I sincerely hope that you will not pass this law. As quoted in your own staff report, it says basically, "As staff has previously advised cannabis, both medical and non-medical, and still remains illegal under federal law. While cannabis use has been decriminalized in California, cannabis remains classified as a Schedule I Controlled Substance under Federal Controlled Substance Law, Act 21 USC Part 801." I want to address at least three points with you today. First of all, there seems to be a perception that this will be a cash cow and make you a lot of money. If it is indeed used as medical, medical things cannot be taxed, so you'll get zero revenue from that. The only thing that you can sell it and make money for the city is if you sell it retail to drug users, basically. If you get real true medical, then you'll get no tax money, so the revenue is not there. I want to address, the second point is, Laguna Hills has a high school that is not far from where one of your proposed locations is. I know you have a 600-foot, you know, restriction of some sort, but that is totally inadequate. Our high school is not that far, and if it's available and they can get it, a high school kid is going to be vulnerable to this kind of thing. Use damages adolescents all the way up to the age of 25. It attacks your frontal cortex. I want to read you a little excerpt from the National Institute of Health, their drug abuse section. "Substantial evidence from research and growing number of studies in humans indicates that marijuana exposure during development can cause long-term and possibly permanent adverse change in the brain. Rats exposed to THC before birth, soon after birth, and during adolescence show notable problems with specific learning and memory tasks." I also want to read you something. This is a study that was done. "Long-term marijuana use appears to alter the brain, causing one region associated with addiction to shrink, forcing the rest of the brain to work overtime to compensate." A new study reports, MRI scans reveal that people who use pot for years have a smaller-than-usual octo-frontal cortex, a region in the brain, in the frontal lobe of the brain that involves decision-making and assessing the expected rewards and punishments of an action. And this is from the Center of Brain Health at the University of Texas. I basically urge you, you know, this is not just going to be used for people that live in Laguna Woods. I understand their medical needs. My son is a medical doctor. I've talked to him, actually, it's last week, about this. And I understand that if you want to use it for medical, that there are good uses for it, but the THC and the other things are purely to get high. I would hope you would consider our youth. I know your, your district city does not have many youth. We do. We have a lot, and I don't want to see them exposed to this kind of thing. It's just too near. Third point I want to make.
I'm going to call, I'm going to call.
Excuse me?
Two minutes? Yes, I'm calling point of order. Your two minutes are up.
I would hope you'd grant me a little bit more time, seeing I have my neighboring city.
Does the council wish to extend the courtesy to? Okay, the mayor made a statement that we would, each participant will be given two minutes, so I'm just speaking to that.
Okay.
The two minutes are up, so if you want to make an exception, that's up to you, but if we make an exception for one, we're going to have to make an exception for everybody, because there are a lot of people here. So that's my point.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
All right, I'm going to dial a little bit. One thing I want to point out is the crime. Your crime will increase from 26 to 1,400 percent, and that's a study that's been done in Denver after they allowed a marijuana place to go in.
Thank you. Catherine, you're next. On deck is Chad Banka.
I was just waiting for the side, at the side there. My concern is, and you heard it last month, you've heard it all along, I don't want this village to become the potch spot in South Orange County, which it is. The last time we talked, we had the illegal, you know, we have the illegal pot shop, which is finally getting closed after a couple months.
Maybe.
Okay? And the residents there, the people are not going to get medical marijuana, and I understand the convenience, I really do, because I'm as old as most of the people in this community. I've lived in the community 29 years, so I have an understanding of what it is when you're aged. But I think we have to realize that we're part of a larger community, and the gentleman, Mr. Wheeler before me, mentioned, when we watched, I sat there and watched at the pot shop that was at the town center, people going in and out of there were between 20 and 40 years old. I did never see, I never saw a senior go in. And unfortunately, once you allow the shop, how do you get rid of it? You can't just remove, once you've allowed and said it's legal to be here, you can't just go and close somebody's shop and say, "Well, you created a problem for us, and now we can..." You know, how are you going to get rid of them? Look how long it took you to get rid of the illegal shop. It's set up in June, and here we are in the middle of August. So it's not as easy as you believe to say, "Well, let's try it and see how it goes, and if we don't make any money out of it, and it costs us a lot of money, we'll just stop." You can't do that once you've already allowed it to occur. You would have a great deal of difficulty, if not a few lawsuits, trying to remove what is considered to be a legal shop without proper authorization.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad Banka. And on deck is Jonathan Adler.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council, and staff. Spoken before, I'd like to ask that you represent the public, who's voted twice, the majority, to support cannabis. I think you've got a great ordinance here, as the previous speaker said. A couple of issues that people have brought up. The experience of other cities, and I know a couple of you have spoken to the police chief of Santa Ana, is that crime does not go up, and the reality is that if you were to just wave a magic wand and a dispensary was to open up legally, unless you're a client and unless you're looking for it, you're not even going to know that it's there. There's not going to be a sign with a pot leaf. This is going to be, this would be very unobtrusive. You've got a lot of safeguards in the ordinance. Your crime's not going to go up. Kids are not going to be allowed in there, and if there is a problem, this is like any other business. They have a business license, they've got a permit, and you have the ability to regulate them. So if there's a problem, you can shut them down, just like any other business. The illegal shop that was opened before, talking about the people that are going in there, these are the people that are willing to go to an illegal business. Somebody that's willing to go to a crack house is not the same person that's going to go to CVS and get a prescription. So these are not the same things. You have people that were willing to break the law and open an illegal business, and people that were willing to go to that business and risk their own health by buying products that were unsafe and untested. This gives you the opportunity to protect the public, to represent them, represent what they've told you that they want, and give them safe access. I just recommend that you continue to move forward and support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Adler. And next up is Andrew Barnett.
You did call my name.
I did.
Thank you. Thank you, council. I'm representing the Laguna Woods Democratic Club, which just passed 470 paid current members, as well as myself. I'd like to kind of switch what I was intending to say and respond directly to my dear friend Catherine and, who is? Who is? You are. And to the mayor of Laguna Hills, and to Mr. Wheeler. And part of it with respect applies to Councilman Hatch. There are two prongs to this. Number one is that you're a decade late in relitigating the law of the state of California, Prop 64, which passed the state of California by 14 percentage points, which in this day and age is a landslide, and the law of the city of Laguna Woods regarding a cannabis dispensary ordinance, which last passed by a margin of 22 percentage points, which is a landslide in this day and age. You're three decades late in litigating the use of medical cannabis. So let's stop, I mean, the law of the state of California, our zoning and ordinance permits it, so let's stop going back and litigating that. Second, and the second kind of general point, which applies to virtually all the arguments I've heard, is what I have dubbed, and I think I've copyrighted, what I call the Youngman Query. The Youngman Query refers to Henny Young, and if you recall his vaudeville act, the fellow says, "How are you, Henny? Fine. How are your kids? Fine. How's your wife?" The Youngman Query is, compared to who? None of these points, and the compared to who is with a cannabis dispensary compared to the present situation. The inference, without logic or statistics, is that when people can patronize a lawful dispensary, it will change their habits, the amount, when they smoke, where they smoke or use gummies or other sources. Traffic, they're currently driving, bussing up to Santa Ana, getting deliveries. I mean, that's kind of like an internal link consistency in the argument, that they can get deliveries, but yet we're opposed to more traffic.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. If we're going to be fair, we have to be fair to everyone in the same way, and his time was up quite a while ago, actually.
Sorry, I missed the key.
We want to let him continue, but I think we need to.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I will, okay, I will ask for two minutes for myself at the end of the thing to tell you all why federal law is completely dead.
Okay, thank you.
And will be. Thank you.
Andrew Barnett.
Thank you. Andrew Barnett. There was a point I was slated to have my jugular replaced five years ago at age 36. I had two soft cell eating organisms attached to my jugular, which UCI couldn't determine after multiple rounds of tests. They were going to fuse my spine because I had a six-inch black, they didn't know what it was, but it was contorting my neck. They were going to do a spinal tap at the same time they were going to perform that surgery. My wife and I chose not to go with the pharmaceutical route. I survived because of a legacy grower in Humboldt County provided me over $200,000 of street-priced cannabis. This is medical stuff, okay? These people have been doing it since 1972. They've saved seven other lives, excuse me. They founded a volunteer fire that they pay for and subsidize. They don't use any pesticides, and they haven't, no fungicides, no herbicides. Everything is done specifically for patients' needs. I'm a Prop 215 guy, but I'm fine with Prop 64. I'm fine with SB 420. We have 1186 that comes into effect January 1st, which involves everybody, meaning anybody can open their own 215 delivery, and you can't stop it. That's SB 1186. So I congratulate you guys for taking a stance and saying, "Let's be adults and realize that the cannabis is coming in, and the consumers are going to consume," or at least there'll be tax revenue. And to people who say that 215, a Prop 215 medical compliant co-op would not pay a city tax for the opportunity to operate, is somebody who's woefully naive and misconstruing the facts for a specified intent that doesn't exist. facts for a specified intent that doesn't exist. I thank you guys for leading on this in South County.
Thank you. Lonnie Painter.
Thank you for all the work you've done on drawing up this ordinance and taking things into consideration. The main opponent of medical marijuana is ignorance. People still believe that it drives people insane with the lust to kill and rape. That's what law enforcement originally told the world, that marijuana will drive you crazy. It is not a gateway drug. I mean, they've given that up long ago. I'd like to read you something from the city council's website. And the city is committed to ensuring that its residents have access to high-quality goods and services close to home. Right? If you're ill, if you can't walk, you don't want to have to travel, you want to be able to get it right here where we live, that the city has promised us. Also, these people who are so against it. Do you mean that you would tell your neighbor, you don't deserve medical cannabis? I don't care how sick you are.
Jonathan, please just address the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Again, it's been pretty much accepted by people who care about other people, that if there's a medicine that's going to help them, it should be allowed. You would not close down pharmacies in this city, but you would close down a medical cannabis pharmacy. I don't understand it. You know that the residents are in favor of this. We've been in favor of it for years. You've had votes, the elections, the Tax Act, all this stuff, and we still do not have local access. We have sick people that need help.
Thank you, Jonathan.
They deserve your help. Thank you.
Are you coming now to speak on your own behalf, instead of on behalf of the Democratic Club? Okay, two minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. What I'd like to do is cite four definitive authoritative sources that make federal law completely inapplicable and on its last days. The Ninth Circuit, Congress, a bill in the Senate, a bill in the House, Department of Justice written policy, and a provision in the Comprehensive Budget Act. It is very rare that a leader, a party leader, will be an initial sponsor or a sponsor of a bill. But the House passed, with Hakeem Jeffries as an initial cosponsor, by 220 to 204, H.R. 3617, the Moore Act, which would completely take marijuana out of the Controlled Substances Act. It got filibustered last year in the Senate. The bill has been reintroduced in the Senate, sponsored, cosponsored by Schumer. Very rare. The Ninth Circuit definitively, in 2016, consolidated 10 prosecutions and joined them from proceeding, dismissed indictments, and held that a provision in the Budget Act, which prohibited DOJ from spending any money on cannabis enforcement in a state where it was regulated or legalized, that that provision in the Budget Act applied, and there could be no prosecution. Next item. DOJ written policy since 2013 prohibits U.S. attorneys from prosecuting cannabis when it's consistent with state legalization and regulation. And last, I would just say that there are now only two U.S. states, and of the five territories, not including them either, which completely criminalized cannabis medically and recreationally, of which 10 do it with a limit on the THC content. So it's coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Have you spoken yet, madam? Would you like to speak now? Please come to the microphone.
Why don't you explain why you spoke twice?
My name is Grace, excuse me. My name is Grace Denzel, and I live in Laguna Woods Village. I don't have a big problem with whether you have a cannabis exchange or not. But what I do want to correct is, I have been a member of the Coast Guard Auxiliary. I have worked on a ship as a merchant mariner, and I want to tell you today, if I was drug-tested and I had marijuana in my system, I would lose my position. It is still an active problem with federal law. So whoever's telling you that it's dead, it isn't dead. I would lose my job. I just want you to understand that there are some misconceptions going on here. But I don't care if you guys decided if that's what the public wants. But I just hate to see people come up and give you bad information, and I personally know that that's not true. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Do you wish to speak? Yes, could you come to the microphone? And identify yourself if you wish.
My name is Ruth Carter, and I've lived here in Laguna Woods about seven years, I think. And what I want to share with you is personal. My husband uses cannabis. He is in tremendous pain. It's kind of painful for me to think about it. And he, it is the only thing, except for oxycodone, which I don't want him to take, and he doesn't want to take, that will reduce that pain. So he spends most of his life in bed now because of the pain. But the cannabis allows him to at least get up, get around the house, do a few things. He's writing again. He's a person again. And it's so important, but let me stop these tears and say something serious. So I go, I drive, I go to Santa Ana every so often, and I buy cannabis. And I can do that. It's not very far up the road. It's not that hard. For me, it's a matter of, it's a matter of money. I think that my tax dollars and all those tax dollars of all my neighbors and friends here that I know use cannabis, that that should come to Laguna Woods. I have nothing against Santa Ana, but I think it should come here. We're spending it. I think we should get the benefit of it as well. So I would like to keep it here in Laguna Woods, all of it, the whole business, everything. And I trust all of you to do a really good job in making it work fairly and honestly and without fear. I already know so many people that use cannabis. It's not going to increase in Laguna Woods. You know, I mean, we're old. We're going to die. Maybe the next people who come in will want to use cannabis, but we're not going to throw those numbers up to the thousands and thousands. 18,000 people aren't going to use cannabis just because they live here. But people should have the right to use cannabis, and I think we should benefit from the money.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. We have two representatives from Laguna Hills here, and we have allowed people who are not our residents, who believe that they will be affected by this ordinance, to speak. So, Mr. Mayor Proten, if you wish to speak as an individual for two minutes, we'll be glad to hear you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak and continue. I've heard a lot of comments since I've been up here. Everybody thinks they're so smart, you know, that all cannabis is fine, is good. It was legislated years ago. I was a teenager in the 60s also, and I've seen it all myself. The thing I did not get a chance to get to was I wanted to continue. I want to reinforce something I said before. There are recent studies, and these studies weren't done 20, 30 years ago, they were done recently. It affects the frontal cortex of your brain. And for kids and adolescents up to the age 25, it is very detrimental. I've seen it actually happen to people. They become zombies. The point I wanted to get to that I didn't get to before was the crime. There's a crime study from the Denver, I'll read it to you, excerpt from the Denver News. "A study found an association between marijuana dispensaries and increased rate in crime and disorder in neighborhoods in Denver, Colorado, shortly after commencement of legal sales of marijuana." This is not 20 years ago or 30 years ago. This is now. 2019 is the date of this. The study researched at the University of Colorado, so they were right there, they know it, appeared in the Justice Quarterly, a legal magazine, a publication of the Academy of Criminal Justice Services or Sciences. "We found the neighborhoods with one or more medical or recreational dispensary saw an increase in crime between 26% and 1,452%." This is going to affect your city, but you guys live in a guarded community, which is going to protect you a little bit. For us in Laguna Hills, we're right next door, high school nearby, a vulnerable neighborhood that's not too far away. We're being affected tremendously. I do not want to see Laguna Woods turning into the drug capital of Southern Orange County, which is what's going to happen. It's just going to be a mess down here, and we are going to fight probably a bigger brunt than you do. I wanted to comment just a brief bit, since I do have a minute or two. I did go over your fiscal assessment a little bit. You estimated something like a cost of $61,040. I think you grossly underestimated that. Their community service officer, which I assume you would hire to do that, they cost $144,000 a year. We pay the same thing as you do. That would get you 17 hours of coverage. Your fiscal has no sales tax estimate and no estimate of the other criminal that's going to increase.
Thank you.
Let's be polite and not interrupt others. Thank you.
Okay. Is Mayor Heff, do you wish to speak?
I do, yes. First of all, thank you.
We're going to ask you to limit it to two minutes.
I'm going to be concise. Thank you so much. Well, thank you, Mayor Connors, and thank you, council members. First of all, I want to say thank you for taking the time to do this job, because we all know it's a thankless job, and we work very hard at it. And I appreciate that, considering I do the same thing. I want to talk to you today a little bit about crime and what's been happening in our own city. Ever since COVID, we've really just had a spike in crime. We've had a spike in lawlessness, and it's really hit our city pretty in particular. We've had shootings. They started with shootings hitting cars. Now we've had shootings with people. We've had gang members come over, shoot other gang members in the middle of parties at our community center, which is just a stone's throw away from you. We have had to hire for over $200,000 a security team in addition to increasing our Orange County Sheriff's Department force, because we just really want to make sure that we're tapping down on this and protecting our residents. And my concern is that, no, I understand that there's a, there's another side to this where it's medicinal and it's helpful for people that are in pain, but at the same time, and going through things, but at the same time, in our city, which is right next door to you, we are just seeing a real uptick in crime, in things that I'm just waiting for the first person to be shot and killed. So I would ask you to consider that in your decision as to what is best for your city, because it could affect us all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there, yes, do you wish to be heard? Please identify yourself if you wish.
Thank you. My name is Irene Polakritis. I'm a resident here at Laguna Woods. I want to say that again, I appreciate all of your work. I think this is a true democratic process in place. This has been voted, the people have spoke, we know what it is. However, I understand your concerns. So what I want to tell you is, for 30 years, I have been a psychiatric geriatric nurse, and I have worked closely with all the ERs in Orange County for over 30 years. Seniors are not in the ERs because of cannabis. Please go to bed every night knowing you are doing the right thing. It is alcohol, oxycodone, Vicodin, all the meds. Go to Saddleback ER. They're not concerned about our residents here getting sick from cannabis. It does happen. I'm a nurse. There are people that have negative side effects, as with any medication, but it's minimal. So I want to assure you that by following our will and the democratic process we have voted, you can rest comfortably at night. You are not putting a curse on Laguna Woods residents. We are not going to all get sick. We are not going to end up in the ER. We're not going to be overdosed, or any of those things that may concern you. If those things concern you, go to Club 19 and go to the bar and see everyone that leaves drunk and deal with that, or go do all of that. This is not something you should be concerned about. Focus on having our sheriff have all the resources he needs to manage it legally. All the concerns you have are legitimate. Deal with them. Let's get it done. Let's do it right. The world is a changing place. This is a part of the change. Let's move forward and do it correctly. And sleep well at night. Please, sleep well at night with this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else in the room who wishes to be heard? One more. Identify yourself if you wish.
Yes, hi. My name is Pat Mycone. I'm a resident of Laguna Woods Village. I'm listening, I'm learning, I'm listening to everyone and weighing everything. I have a question. It seems like the main benefit for the 18,000 people in Laguna Woods is the medical marijuana. Is that what I'm hearing? So why are we opening up to retail? Why don't we just have a medical pharmacy for CBD? That would just dispel all of the concerns and the uncertainties. There's more questions than answers, as far as I'm concerned, what I've heard. So can we just take a little bit more time and look at just medical only? That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is that it from the room? Chris, is there anybody on Zoom or telephone who's indicated a wish to speak?
Yes.
Our messages, we also receive the emails. Are you going to read those?
We didn't do it at the last meeting, but if you'd like me to.
I think we should. Yeah. If your comments, don't you think we should make them?
Well, the comments, the public comments are made to influence, to address us.
If someone sends an email, I think they expect it to be looked at and heard.
Well, it's been looked at and heard by all of us.
Why don't we let them hear what others are saying? We have, yes, we have.
Okay, well, we didn't do it last month.
We didn't last time. That's true.
I will advise you that we have received approximately a dozen emails from proponents and opponents, and not everybody identified themselves as a resident of our city or a resident of some other city. And I know I read them all, and I assume all of us have read them all. And so we are taking those into consideration, the same as you are taking, the same as we are taking yours into consideration. So I don't think it's necessary for us to read them. Chris, do we have anybody online or on Zoom?
Yes, we have two individuals who have indicated a desire to speak. The first is Sarah. I'm going to give you permission to talk.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I am Sarah Armstrong. I represent the interests of Americans for Safe Access in Los Angeles and Ventura Counties. I'm speaking with you today about why it's very important to have an adult-use component to your licensure. When legalization came through, 85% of patients in Los Angeles did not renew their recs. The reason for this is patient privacy. Medical cannabis patients who are identified as medical cannabis patients can lose their kids, their jobs, their housing. It's so much more of an issue of privacy than most people realize. If you can go in, show your government ID indicating that you are over 21, you have access to the same products you had when California was a medical-only state. If those products are not carried in your dispensary, you talk to the manager, and I've seen it again and again, they move heaven and earth to get that specialized product that you need. That's the primary reason that Americans for Safe Access, which is the oldest national advocacy organization for patients, urges municipalities to grant both medical and recreational licenses to the dispensaries they choose. The effects of being identified as a medical cannabis patient can be just overwhelming. And if you're already sick, it's just a double whammy of immense proportions. Please help protect the privacy of patients. Please help protect the privacy of patients by offering both the adult use and medical license to the dispensaries that you choose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, the second speaker is Neil.
Hi, everyone, good afternoon, just a sound check?
We're good.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for calling in, I unfortunately have a full-time job, so I can't always come to these things during the daytime. But I'm a resident just down the street from the proposed location on Molten, at least from what I can gather, or from online sources, including your city's own website. And I believe that this will detrimentally impact a lot of the neighborhoods around Laguna Woods, and so I'm asking for a compromise today. I'm asking that Laguna Woods takes another second to revise the proposed ordinance language. I appreciate that you guys are including a 600-foot buffer for your surrounding cities and county of Orange land for parks, such that, you know, these facilities can't be located within 600 feet of those, but I'm also saying that it should also be revised to include where it states very low-income or disadvantaged communities, or low-income neighborhoods, proposed or current, to also include the county of Orange property and all surrounding cities, including Laguna Hills and Elise Viejo. So you do have two very low-income neighborhoods within walking distance of the proposed location on Molten, including in Elise Viejo off Vieja Iglesia, and then Vialomas in Laguna Hills. And I believe that this will, you know, unfortunately, we've had situations where entrepreneurs and American businesses, along with even our own government, have in the past pushed, you know, substances, whether it's alcoholism or drugs, on low-income, especially communities of color. And so I'm asking your council to please not be part of that notorious history, and revise the ordinance language, so that at least it's a compromise. I'd also like to ask the council to please consider doing medical only, and also recognizing SB 1186, perhaps delivery of these services as a better, more confidential, ADA-accessible option for residents, rather than a specific storefront. Those are my comments, but I'd really appreciate it if you guys could consider your neighboring cities, and some of the neighborhoods around you guys. I believe that we're all in this together, and it would be interesting to note that Laguna Woods is the only city south of Irvine to allow this. There's probably a lot of good city councils out there that have stayed away from this issue, and so it's interesting--
Thank you, Neil. I'm sorry, we have a two-minute limit, thank you for your comments.
Okay, I have no other requests to speak on Zoom.
Okay. Public comments are closed. Now we can have some council comments, I might as well start at this end.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've listened to all of the comments and all of the feedback. First of all, I want to thank the staff for doing an amazing job, and I support this ordinance, I support it 100%. I respect everybody coming and giving us your views on this, and I thank you, your voices have been heard, and my vote is yes on this ordinance.
Want to go? I don't know how many of you saw the latest special that Sanjay Gupta did on CNN on seniors and cannabis. It was revolutionary when he did the one children and cannabis. These kids on epilepsy were dying, they were having 100 seizures a day. Miracle of miracles, there was Rick Simpson's oil, an oil that could help them. So seven specials later, he just came back from Israel, he rode the cannabis, which I've ridden myself, and listened to our residents many times, I've ridden up there with them and listened to them. He had just come back from Israel, and they were showing some of the research that's been done over there. I want our seniors here to have what the seniors in other countries have. And the argument between medicinal and recreational, there's no difference between recreational and medical, there isn't, it's the same thing. If you are relaxed, you're healthier. When you're stressed out, I don't care whether you're completely well or completely sick, it's bad for your body. So relaxing is good for you. A doctor used to tell my 90-year-old father to have a drink at night, it would relax him. This was 100 years ago, but the point was, relaxing is good for you. So this is all medical, and as far as the village and worried about cannabis, we've been smoking cannabis in the village for years. I mean, besides the votes that were taken, that were citywide on our ballots, that people did respond to, the cannabis club was one of the biggest clubs while it was operating, it was so educational, people learned a lot. We learned about testing, and the need for testing, and how much trouble you could get into with your body by breathing fungicides and pesticides and fentanyl. I mean, you don't know what additives are put on there. So if somebody is stupid enough to go to an illegal dispensary, I can't speak to that, but I believe that the more legal dispensaries that exist, the fewer illegal dispensaries will exist, so the safer people will be. The young man that came, thank you for coming and speaking out, because I know you probably don't live in our city. This is why I believe in it, is for the medical patients, and the people that can get so much benefit. It's unfortunate that our country won't even permit research on it, but Israel does permit research, and what's coming out is phenomenal, and we're, it's criminal that we don't have this, that all we have is pharmaceuticals to go to. And as far as it being a gateway drug, it is not. It's a gateway because when you're 16 or 15 years old and you're looking to get high, the same person that might have sold that, well, might sell other things. If you can get something legally once you're 21, because you can't get into a dispensary if you're a kid, no one's going to sell it to you outside. They have armed guards at the dispensaries, I'm sure some of you were never at a dispenser, I've been to, they only let a certain number of people in, and it's very, very controlled and undramatic. We, and you want to talk about crime in Denver? We spoke to the police chief and the sergeant of Santa Ana, which is considerably closer, that has many dispensaries. They had 100 illegal dispensaries there before they put in the legal dispensaries. They have no crime there. I'm going to believe them, not, I mean, maybe Denver had problems, I don't care. I care about here, and what we can expect here. And of course, one city's results don't mean you're going to have the same thing in another city, but I believe it will turn out to be as completely undramatic as it is in Santa Ana, where you just go and buy it like you, like you do a six-pack of beer. And I just, I want this for our residents. I know the kids can't get it, I know there probably will not be the crime that we're talking about. And Laguna Hills, I appreciate you showing up here. For 20 years, we've been showing up at your city council to get a golf cart path. We would still like to talk about that, but we've never gotten, I know, we've never gotten any help either, now the mall is torn down. But, so, I'm going to respond to the residents in my city. Your kids can't get in, my seniors can, and they can get there in their golf carts, so we won't need to have the traffic from other delivery places, we won't need to have people driving, no one's going to sell in the village. There's never any, there's nothing commercial in the village, it'll just be another store in the city. So I'm voting yes, and I move this ordinance. All right. First off, any person who has an illness or has a need, believe me, I support you. And if, even if you want to use it recreational, and you like it, it works for you, it's not my place to make a decision for you. So I think first off, I need to clear that. But there is a problem, and the problem has not been mentioned, and that is the problem that when marijuana was passed, we passed 64, in 2016, it was going to be, get rid of all the illegal, that was the whole point, the drug dealers. Drug dealers are people who sell illicit drugs. There are more illicit drug dealers today than there were in 2016, and why? It's the money. Every person who came up here, and you can look at yourself and said it, hey, there's money there for our city, it's the money, and it's what's caused the problem. All that tax, from the growers, to the distributors, to the retailers, is just piled on top, and I'm sorry, everything you heard about Santa Ana, not true, and I'm going to use documented. And let's look at what happened in Santa Ana, the real story. By the way, you can document this by a series of articles written by the Los Angeles Times on this very issue of the overtaxation of marijuana, of cannabis, and what's the problem? And we had it right here in our city, and it's not gone yet, been here for 60 days, but let's think about it. Okay, in January 27, 2022, a year ago last January, more than 5,000 marijuana plants seized an illegal drug operation in Santa Ana Wednesday night, according to police, building was red-tagged, no word on arrest. Los Angeles, this was in the Los Angeles News, that was the following April. "A half dozen unmarked vehicles and two California Highway Patrol (CHP) cars blocked off the parking lot of Super Clinic, a registered cannabis dispensary in Santa Ana, shortly after the store opened on March 18 at 8:00 a.m. With an agent from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration supervising the situation, multiple CHP officers entered the building and counted numerous six-inch-high stacks of cash, and ultimately took the money from the store. Super Clinic owners refused to respond to the numerous questions surrounding the incident, with state tax authorities claiming that privacy laws prevent them from discussing particular cases. Experts say the Santa Ana shop operation had all the symptoms of a tilt-top civil warrant, and ordered the IRS employees to confiscate cash from businesses that haven't paid sales tax bills despite repeated warnings. This is the second time of such an incident occurring at a longstanding dispensary in the last month. In early March, the CDTFA and CHP raided the TLC in Boyle Heights, which is run by the well-known industry veterans Jungle Boys. Officers walked in with weapons drawn and confiscated more than $100,000 from TLC's cash registers after they paid $18 million in taxes in 2021, according to a video released on the company's Instagram page. That's triggering to all of us, because this is what used to happen regularly, Dana Cisneros, an attorney who's worked with cannabis business for five years, said. Law enforcement have raided pot shops in California for decades, immediately arresting people and seizing goods on the grounds of business operating in the gray space provided by medical marijuana laws. Due to marijuana legalization in 2016 and leeway granted individuals in the growing cannabis industry, raids on licensed dispensaries have been rare in recent years. Raids such as these bring attention to separate licensed businesses, prompting questions of whether state authorities are entering a stricter enforcement phase when dealing with legal dispensaries." Remember, that was a year ago April. Okay, Los Angeles Times, last September. "Compromises to win political support with decisions made after it was approved unleashed a litany of problems that have undermined the state-sanctioned market." Santa Ana register last October. Santa Ana amended the municipal code a ho. Listen to this. What is it about? It's about taxes. "Santa Ana amended the municipal code as well as taxes related to cannabis. The new ordinance went into effect January 1, 2023. The tax rate for cannabis distribution, cultivation, and manufacture was lowered from 6% to 1%. Cannabis retail taxes are reduced by 1%, medicinal from 6% to 5%, and recreational from 8% to 7%. Cannabis retailers that meet the requirements, that meet the requirements of social equity measures can further reduce their tax rates by additional 2%. All retailers may sell medicinal and recreational cannabis. Permitted retail locations can open consumption lounges where cannabis products may be sold and consumed. Permitted retailers can have temporary consumption events where cannabis may be sold and consumed twice a year, either at the retail site or at an off-site location." This last January. Okay, ABC, "More than 5,000," oh, sorry, wrong page, I was repeating that one. Okay, "The city of Santa Ana can hold temporary consumption festivals where people can sell and consume cannabis." This one is now August 13, just a few days ago. This is what's going on in Santa Ana. While you hear it's perfect, that's not quite the case. "New university, this is University of California, Irvine, licensed marijuana dispensaries in Santa Ana and Los Angeles were raided for unpaid taxes August 13, 2023, two days ago. A half dozen unmarked vehicles and two California Highway Patrol (CHP) officers blocked off the parking lot of Super Clinic, a registered cannabis dispensary in Santa Ana, shortly after the store opened on March 18, this was a previous one, at 8:00 a.m. With an agent from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration supervising this situation, multiple CHP officers entered the building and counted numerous six-inch-high stacks of cash and took the money from the store. Super Clinic stores, owners refused to respond to the numerous questions surrounding the incident, with state tax authorities claiming that privacy law prevents them." This is the second time, this had happened in March, okay? "So raids such as these bring attention to separate licensed businesses, prompting questions of whether they are entering a stricter enforcement issue." Hope I didn't copy these, get these backwards. The point is that the store was raided again this last Sunday, and you can roll your eyes, look at the ceiling, and say, oh, this, it's wonderful in Santa, it's not wonderful. Santa Ana had to lower their taxes, and even lowering it last January, they still had to have a raid just in August. Why are legal stores being raided? We have a drug dealer. A drug dealer is anyone who sells illicit drugs, and we have a drug dealer in our city that's been operating since June. Why weren't they raided? Think about it, why would the state raid the one and not the other? The other pays no taxes, they're selling products that someone's already stated could have anything in it, from chemicals to pesticides. Why would they raid the one? It's the money. The money is in the legal store, they're collecting the cash, so they're not raiding the drug dealers. Does anyone find this a little weird? I do, and you do. What is the problem? It's the tax. The tax is too high. And the Los Angeles Times has done a series of articles on this, people are speaking about it, but you don't see it in the paper, because we need to take time and look at it. And what is our tax? What is our tax? You want to say what it is?
10%.
10%. This is crazy.
That it? Okay.
Do you mean that if they lower the tax, you support it?
I would support a lower tax, definitely.
Okay. Neil, would you sit on the microphone and give us your comments?
I was going to read this poem at a closed session, but it seemed to me that it fits here. By the way, I saw the CD, I mean, saw the, you know, the CD broadcast of what's going on in Israel with attacks, it was a marvelous thing. It was amazing, and it had to do not with recreational cannabis at all. That was dismissed during the course of the conversation and the interviews. It was all about Laguna Woods Village people, the people that are hurting, the people that have medical problems, the children that have medical problems. We had at one time, and I don't know whether they're still here, which was my hope years ago, when this surfaced, we had a resolution here, which we're getting rid of today, apparently by the vote, that would deal an opportunity for people to come up and open medical cannabis, cannabis businesses here in our city for medical purposes. Nobody came, and so that's going to be replaced if this is voted in. But that was what's happening in Israel. They are researching the impact-- They are researching the impact of cannabis. They have cannabis-growing farms there. Growing only cannabis that is used for medical purposes. Apparently, there is a difference between the pot smoker and the medical user. If we adopt this resolution, that opportunity will pass. I had hoped, as I maybe mentioned to Sherry, that Israeli group of doctors and researchers who were in the Taj Mahal, what, three or four years ago? Yeah, are they still here?
They went back to Israel.
Yeah, they went back to Israel. And it seemed to me what a marvelous opportunity we let pass. So here we are. So I'm going to read you a poem, at least two stanzas of the poem, which it seems to me is what you are asking us to do or not to do. Robert Frost. You remember Robert? "The Road Not Taken." "Two roads diverged in a yellow wood." I'm not a good poet. "And sorry, I could not travel both. And be one traveler long I stood and looked down, one as far as I could, to where it began in the undergrowth, then took the other as just as fair, and having perhaps the better claim because it was grassy and wanted aware, though as far that the passing there had won them really about the same, worn them really about the same. And both that morning equally lay in leaves, no deep, no step had treaded black. Oh, I kept the first for another day, yet knowing how way leads on to way, I doubted if I could ever come back. I shall be telling this with a sigh, somewhere ages and ages hence, two roads diverged in a wood. And I, I took the one less traveled by, and this has made all the difference." So we are here to decide a road that we're to travel. I think it will make a difference. I have suggested to you and your predecessors who have appeared before us before that there was an alternative that I felt would stand the best chance on that road to avoid the potential that is there. But we are going to vote today. And my solution was that from the research I've done and the talking I've done with some of the Santa Ana group, that can deliveries be made to the doorstep of you? Okay? And the answer was yes. And that suggestion on my part was poo-pooed and indicated that it was ridiculous. And the reason given was that the, I presume it was the person delivering could make substitutions so that it would not be what was prescribed or what was to be used by you. And the product that you would get would be diluted or changed or harmful. That is patently an impossibility because no reputable dealer, as these cannabis operations are, as has been suggested many times, would ever allow that sort of thing if they were delivering it in their trucks, nor would UPS or FedEx or whoever it is do anything like that. So my sense was that there is a solution that would protect us and would protect you and the hundreds that vote that use it. Lonnie, we can't ever go back to the way you were doing it very quietly, can we? And because we can't, now it has to be, if we pass, very publicly. So that I will vote no, as I did, because I believe very strongly that there is an alternative. And I watched and took notes. The CNN, and it was magnificent what they're doing there. For you, I can go to a dispensary, just like Stevie has, and buy your medical marijuana. It's come to that point, but it's government-controlled. Okay. My final comment, and this is what I deem is an absolute responsibility.
No, we can't hear you.
I know you can, and I'm sorry. It was an absolute responsibility that I have as a member of this city council. I received a letter, a copy of a letter from Catalyst, Weed for the People. Signed by Attorney Damian A. Martin Esquire, in which he makes these two comments. And the reason I'm telling you this is because I'm going to have a question to city council, I mean, to our attorney. If Laguna Woods City Council approves the second reading and adopts the ordinance for Laguna Woods cannabis retail sales business regulations, the city will be sued. He subjected to years of litigation and payment of attorney's fees and likely to be defeated in court. And then he gives what is purported reasoning is by looking at the proposal. So if Laguna Woods City Council approves the second reading and adopts the ordinance for Laguna Woods cannabis retail sales business regulations as currently drafted, the city will face the same fate as the city of San Bernardino with miserable. His attorney was involved in the suits in San Bernardino. They were ultimately, and an opinion of a court in that litigation favored the cannabis proponents. My understanding is that that trial court decision was overturned by the appellate court. I've looked up cases since that time, found one that indicates what the standard is now that you determine whether a business that you've adopted, an ordinance you've adopted, will withstand scrutiny legally. We still have, however, this threat, and I'm going to ask council now if she will respond to, because I don't have in my possession a written opinion from our legal counsel as to precisely what we might expect when we adopt this ordinance, as it has been indicated we will do. And we would be derelict if we do not get council's reputation as to what the future holds. Council, please. We've, I should, we talked about this a little before, so this is not a surprise.
Thank you, Councilmember Hatch. So I am aware of the letter. We've received that yesterday, and we had time. Sorry, what was that? Was that feedback? Okay. We received it yesterday. We had time to go through it. Our office is well aware of Catalyst's litigation. They have a number of cases against a number of cities that passed cannabis ordinances that they had disagreements with. The one they referred to in their letter was from city of San Bernardino. And that was from quite a few years ago. It was a very different approach to cannabis regulation than what Laguna Woods is proposing here, where what San Bernardino did was identify specific parcels where they would allow cannabis. And it wasn't based on buffers or land use standards. It was just, they had chosen parcels in their city, and not very many. For retailers, it really came down to just one postal address that was going to be allowed for cannabis. And in that, under those facts, and under those circumstances, the trial court determined that that was spot zoning. What we've done here with our ordinance, and we went through it in quite a bit of detail at the last public hearing, but we have not chosen any spots. We have not chosen any addresses. We have not chosen any areas other than two of our three commercial areas are going to be permitted if the ordinance passes for cannabis. And then there are a number of different development standards and buffers that would apply. And so if you took the city today and you applied all of our buffers, you would get a list of about six addresses where you could potentially have a cannabis retailer. There's a lot of variables that would go into that. So if one cannabis retailer opened at one of the addresses, it might conflict out other addresses that are on the list. And all of that is outlined in the staff report. That's going to change over time depending on where the various sensitive uses go. So things like preschools might change, rehab facilities, supportive housing. All of that changes over time. We could expand or contract commercial zones. So the spots are not going to stay the same over time. Under these circumstances, a spot zoning case would not be a successful case. We could still get sued. You can get sued for anything you do. You can get sued for not doing things. We can't control that. All we can do is control that you have our office take a really good look at your ordinances and not present anything to you that we don't think we could defend in court. And that's what we've done here.
Pasadena's been hit as well by the same attorney.
Can you lean forward a little, Noel?
I said Pasadena, Redondo Beach are two of the cities. In any event, as Robert Frost said, "Two roads diverged in a wood, and I took the one less traveled by, and this has made all the difference." So after this vote, since I love all of you and live among you for 20-some years, I hope that this will solve some problems and not create serious problems here and elsewhere. And I do think about the young people. Look, don't say that anymore because when I get home, my wife tells me we can't hear you. And, okay, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
All right, forget everything I've said, okay? That you didn't hear, all right? So anyway, that's, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for Laguna Hills. We've worked together a long time. May whatever happens in the weeks and months ahead be for the well-being of those who favor cannabis usage and those who don't. That we will, as a community, continue to work together for common goals that keeps this community and neighboring cities safe from the evil that is out there.
I'd like to ask a further question of the city attorney, which has to do with California's regulation of cannabis retail. Is it correct that the only opportunities, the only options under our existing California law is a cannabis retailer that is open for medical and non-medical or else nothing? Or do we have an option to create medical only in our city?
So that's a good question. Legally, you could create a Laguna Woods ordinance that says medical retailers are the only retailers that are allowed. The challenge with that is, I think, twofold, maybe more than twofold, but two main issues. One is that, as a practical matter, California law no longer makes that distinction. And so now Laguna Woods is going to have to create our own local infrastructure for how we are going to distinguish adult use versus medical use. And then the second problem with that approach would be that, as a practical matter, probably you're not going to get any retailers that are interested in trying to operate on a medical basis only. I don't, okay, so we have some retailers in the audience. But that could be an issue where if you want to create an ordinance with the expectation that a retailer would come into town, that would be contrary to that interest.
Okay, thank you. I also have a question for our chief of police services regarding the unauthorized marijuana shop that has been operating in our city for the last several weeks. And I'd like to know whether you have had any increased criminal activity in that area?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As far as your question, I went ahead and researched our CAD entries for calls for services to the general area, and there's nothing to speak of specifically to that location, that specific unit. We've obviously done a couple of inspections along with your code enforcement. But anything, there was nothing as to that unit itself.
Okay, thank you.
Let's remember they were illegal, and they were selling to minors. I saw it.
Okay, can we call for the question?
Our city council has been working to make marijuana available to our residents probably since 2007, since before I was on the council. And when the state passed its law around 2017, I think, we revisited the idea and then decided to wait until there was a little more global experience. And our residents have wanted this for a long time. And we have been trying to be careful in our consideration of this for a long time to determine that it's good for our residents who want it and that it's not bad for our residents who don't care or who don't want it. So I think what's happened a lot with the concept of marijuana is, has a good relationship to the concept of prohibition. When something that everybody uses becomes illegal, it makes ordinary citizens into people who do illegal acts. And our state has now authorized this for us, and the city is looking to authorize it now. I just want to address a couple of the comments that were made. First, I want to point out that even with an unauthorized pot shop in our city, we have no documented instances of people walking out and selling it to 14-year-olds. Nothing about people toking up in their cars and driving off wobbly and running over the flower beds. Nothing about throwing the product over the wall into the nearby preschool. And I think, given that our own personal experience with an unauthorized shop has not increased our crime rate in that vicinity, I think we cannot be faulted for imagining that a legal shop is not likely to have an increased crime rate. And with regard to Councilmember Horn and my conversation with the police chief in Santa Ana, he didn't say there was no crime. There's no city that has no crime. But what he said was that burglaries and break-ins were basically the only kinds of things that happened at their legal shops. And those things happened with less regularity there than they did at the mini-marts, the ANPMs, and the 7-Elevens. So my concern about unlawful activity is not high. We will not be selling to people under 21, so that high school kids are not going to be coming into our facilities. People complained about smoking. People complained about smoking, but smoking is also a code enforcement issue. There is a city ordinance, and there are rules within our homeowners' associations that prohibit people from smoking on their balconies or in common areas, and require people to smoke either 20 feet away from buildings or within an enclosed household of their own. And those ordinances apply to marijuana as well as to anything else that people want to smoke. I think the concept of a gateway drug is much like the concept of prohibition. If marijuana is illegal, then people have to go to dealers to get it. If you go to dealers, you get in the habit of going to dealers, you hang around with dealers, you hang around with people who use unlawful things. If you could buy marijuana at Walgreens, it probably would not be a gateway drug any more than aspirin is a gateway drug. And I'm sure that Laguna Hills knows that we did go to some effort to protect our neighbor cities by including a provision as we calculated what addresses were available, by making sure that any address or any parcel that could hold a retail cannabis store would be entered from streets owned by our city and not by streets owned by adjacent cities. And I have to tell you that personally, when this concept came before us, I was thinking, well, that furniture store way, way up there on the edge of our city here, or that little store way down on the edge of our city there, those would be good spaces where we could put it because it would be out of the way. But I think our kinder selves and our better selves prevailed. And so we have done what we can to buffer our facilities from adjoining cities. With regard to the Colorado statistics, as good as they may be, in about 2019 or 2017, Colorado went from a state with no legal cannabis to a state with lots of legal cannabis. And I know there was a transition time going on there. What we are considering here is the potential with statewide approval of cannabis stores now about five years old, to making it more convenient and just moving it closer for our relatives. This is not a dramatic new thing that we are doing before anybody in the state has had a chance to try it out, or before any other states have had a chance to try it out. I think delivery methods, responding to Councilmember Hatch, I think delivery is insufficient because I think, particularly in the medical area, but also in other areas, people want to see what there is. They want to examine the product. They want to see how it smells, see how it looks, and figure out what the total panoply of available products is so they can select from among them. And when you order for delivery, you really don't have that opportunity. So the last thing I will point out is that it appears to me that if we reduced our tax by 1% or down to 7%, that even Councilmember Moore might approve this because the taxes appear to be her primary objection. But if our taxes turn out to be too high, what I think is, people won't be beating down our doors and suing us to open a shop here if the taxes are so high that it makes it unprofitable. And if the taxes are more than we need to assist us in operating our city and in operating our city with cannabis stores in it, we will have the opportunity to vote for, to vote to reduce those taxes, just as Santa Ana has reduced its taxes. So I don't find that a problem. I'm satisfied with our city attorney's comments about our potential liability. And as we know, anybody can sue anybody for anything. But I think that we have a very defensible ordinance here. And so I am in favor of voting yes, and I will second the motion. Okay, I thank you all for coming, and I want you to know we've all been heard, and I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the ordinance...
We don't have a second yet.
Yes, I just seconded. All in favor of the ordinance as read by our city manager, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
No.
Oppose.
Okay. The ordinance is passed, and we thank all of you in person and online and on the phone for your attention and for your patience. And I think we'd better have a brief recess while people make their way out of the council chambers. Thank you. We'll be in recess. Okay, we are back in session. I know there are people who have signed up to give public comments on items other than cannabis, and you have been waiting a long time. So before we do our library presentation, I'd like to move to item five, public comments on non-agenda items. Right now, we have Cheryl Finnick, who has asked to speak to us.
I'd like to respectfully request to get my three minutes back.
Say that again.
I'd like to respectfully request getting my three minutes back.
You can have three minutes.
Thank you very much. And the good news about cooling my heels is I'm not as angry as I was when I walked in. I have time to cool off. Okay, so when I'm, and I wrote letters, by the way, and I think I wrote it with my EQ and not my IQ, so I apologize. So I come home to find this notice on my door, my patio door. I need to read it to you. Stop work. Stop work on all work being done. Pay permits for building from the building. And contact a person. And then the line below, it says, "Reinspection fee is required. No additional inspection will occur unless you pay us." I have no work done in my house. I don't know what this is, this harassing, bullying notice. This is not about you guys wanting to permit things. I don't care. You have to follow regulations. You have to permit. What I'm telling you is, is what's not acceptable to me is the fact of the process of how you communicate with us. We have elected you, and I'm, after hearing you today, happy about it. You guys are amazing, to advocate for us. This is not advocating for us. How does this dude, Chris, who approved him to leave such a notice like this? What policies and procedures do you have in place? Excuse me, I don't know what you're saying, but I'll finish.
Could you give them a...
I will, dear. I will, dear. Whatever you need, honey. Oh, pass it on.
Thank you. Thanks.
I don't, it's about how you handle things. How can you leave such a notice? I don't even, I'm appalled at it, that you can harass us in that fashion. And I called the guy up. I said, "What is this about?" He said, I said, "How are you even determining that I'm doing something in my house?" I'm sorry, that's confidential. So I said, confidential? I said, "Maybe the mayor would like to know. Would it be confidential to her?"
Well, I'm going to send me a letter.
So the point is, is that you don't know what your individual staff person is doing. But you know what? You got to know what this dude is doing and the supervisors that's allowing him. I've spoke to a lot of people to do some research and then staffing and stuff. And they told me some stories. I'm not going to repeat it right now because it's not appropriate. And anytime you want to hear me, I'll let you know. You cannot throw spaghetti on the wall and think that you're going to find people that are not permitted. So if it falls to the ground, oh, well. If it sticks, yay, we got somebody. It's unacceptable. How about, the solution is, leaving me a note that says, "It has been determined that you're working, that you're doing some unpermitted work. Please call us at this number so we can further discuss."
Okay, point well taken. Let me ask our city manager if he has any comments.
I did receive a letter that I believe you sent to us. We're looking into it. I don't have firsthand knowledge of it. That stop-work order was issued by our building staff, but I am looking into it, and somebody will get back to you.
I mean, I did, I did have, I was walking around for four days in ankle-deep water, had several slab leaks. Every wall I had had a hole in it. So I did that. And there were workers coming in and out. Maybe this dude rode around and said, "Ah, I see a worker. Oh, let me look it up." No, that address has no, has no permit associated with it. All I'm suggesting to you is, is there's got to be a better way. I mean, we're seniors. Some of us are tired. Some of us are sick. We don't need that on our door.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the feedback as well. We'll get in touch with you.
Okay, thank you, guys. That's all I need to know.
Thank you. Would you make sure that the clerk has your phone number?
Also, I don't owe you any money, right? Because that note says I owe you money.
No reinspection fee is required. Will you make sure that the clerk has your phone number?
I believe I put it on the paper.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for taking the time.
No, actually, we don't have your phone number on the paper. And thank you for waiting through all this other stuff. Kimberly Belli. Any relation to Melvin Belli?
Distantly. One of my daughters actually sent him a letter when he was still living. And he wrote back to her and through his secretary, but it was fun. His parents were from the same hometown in Italy that my father-in-law's parents are.
Would you move the microphone a little closer sideways?
It's very hard to hear.
Thank you.
Okay. And I can't see my notes.
Oh.
Okay. I just want to come and talk about the senior summit we've been working really hard on. We finally got a date. It's October 27. And we've secured SOCA in the city of Elisa Viejo, and it'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And one of the main things is we need volunteers. So if there's anyone interested, I mean, they can work half the day and then visit the summit the second half. And we'll, we have breakfast and lunch. So, and I'll make sure they get coffee. But I think it's going to be great.
What's the date again?
It's October 27, which is a Friday.
Oh.
And there's going to be several booths there, some of them featuring county resources and hospitals and a lot of private agencies and companies that will be setting up and offering advice or free items. The discussion topics this year are going to be throughout the day and cover subjects like accessibility, affordability, and needs assessments. Classes offered will include keep moving for your mental and physical health, and diet exercise is something that we all need, and then estate planning, self-defense, safety demonstrations, plus technology about learning to operate your iPad or your smartphone, also touching on elderly scam protection. And we're going to have 200 iPads and 200 medical advices, advices, is that what it is?
Advices.
That will be free. So first come, first served. And in addition, Supervisor Foley's been working, doing what we call coffee and conversation at all of our cities. So soon I'll figure out who I get in touch with so we can have one in Laguna Woods. And she'll give updates on the county. And afterwards, anyone there, any of the neighbors can ask questions. So if you don't already receive our newsletter, please go online and register. It's very easy. Just go to Supervisor Katrina Foley online and click "What's Happening?" and then click Newsletter. And you can either sign up for it or you can just read it there. But all of this and tons of information are on there. So, and also, one more thing, I want to give my phone number again. I do it every time. 714-834-3550. So if you have any questions or anything that I can help with for the city of Laguna Woods, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't we have the summit there last year?
The last time.
Have a what?
The last time it was in Silicon.
Yes, it was. It was.
And the attendance was pretty good, as I remember.
1,200. And we're expecting more this year.
Yeah. And that's all of Orange County, not just South County, right?
Yes. I don't know if it's...
It's probably for her district.
I think, yes, District 5. I think other districts do their own.
Districts 5 do their own.
Yes, which is all along the coast.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
We used to have that here, didn't we?
Yeah, we did. When it was smaller, we hosted it here.
Okay.
You outgrew us here. Yeah, that's a great, it's a great presentation. It really is. Thank you.
Yeah.
It's a wonderful event, and our California senior legislature is planning on being there, so I'm sure we'll all volunteer. We'll probably have a table there, too.
Great.
So we're really excited about it.
Yeah, we have some good speakers coming, and we'll have breakout sessions. And this will be my first time attending, but I'm really looking forward to it.
Good.
Well, don't feel embarrassed. You look so young.
Well, I'm a senior, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Everything's relative.
Okay, we've been going sort of out of order this afternoon, but we're going to come now to item four, which includes our library update.
All right. I do have some photos I want to show today. Okay, so I wanted to give you a sense of what's going on inside the library. The library itself is in the process of moving in. So these pictures were taken, I believe, yesterday. But I'm going to show you a couple of visuals of the inside. You can see in this picture the checkout desk on the left, the television screen behind it, bathroom in the background over here with the drinking fountain, some of the carols that'll eventually be filled with computers for the public to use, and then some seating area as well. This view's taken, if you walk in the library through the main doors, this is what you would see kind of right in front of you and to your immediate left. Next image is taken kind of from the opposite angle. So you're looking towards the entrance, which are those glass doors. In the background, the checkout desk is over here on the right. That seating area that we saw is right in front of us. And then you can see some of the shelving that doesn't yet have material on it, but you can see some of the bookshelves and material shelves that are there, as well as the, the library purchased some small, the best way I can think of to describe them is like ottomans, but they're like padded seating, casual seating areas of some kind. This is another view taken from the circulation desk looking back. So you can see that whole wall facing the parking lot, which is what these windows look out on. That whole wall is lined with computer carols. I believe some of them will have computers, and some of them will have an open desk area for anybody who has a laptop that they might have with them and need to connect to Wi-Fi. And then you can see again some of the shelving in the background. I wanted to just briefly, and I realize this is not like a particularly interesting picture, but I wanted to comment briefly on the restroom situation in the library. I'm aware that there's some internet dialogue going on about the library. It does, in fact, have a restroom. This is the restroom that's in there. The restroom is a single occupancy restroom. The library is the lesee of the space, and so they will ultimately determine how to use the restroom. My understanding is that they're anticipating using it as a staff-only restroom and using the public restrooms at City Hall for patrons. But again, that's their decision. The buildings were intentionally constructed to share certain amenities. So you'll notice that, for instance, the library doesn't have its own janitorial closet. We have consolidated janitorial services inside City Hall to allow maximum space possible for the actual kind of library proper functions. So the building is meant to leverage the restrooms that are available in City Hall, but I wanted to provide visual proof to everyone that there is, in fact, a restroom inside the library. Can't speak to exactly how it'll be used, but it was certainly not constructed with insufficient restrooms. And the presence or number of restrooms has in no way impacted the readiness of the library to open to the public. The picture in the screen on the right side, again, this is some more of the shelving in the library, kind of where you're looking at here, right, you see the little spit of light on the floor at the bottom? That light is coming through a door that actually enters the room right in front of us, the outdoor activity space. So this is the far, I guess, north side of the library, looking down where some materials will be. Wanted to talk briefly about the schedule for the library. I know Councilmember Moore had some questions at the last meeting. The initial schedule obviously assumed a much earlier completion date. Our original schedule from the contractor showed the library being complete in or about August of 2022. Subsequent to that, really, a lot of things happened, but I'm just going to hit at a high level on some of the more significant ones. As we've talked about... As we've talked about in this room many times before, supply chain issues really hit us hard, particularly with the metal components for the library. So one of the changes that was made to the library was to add some door and window replacements to City Hall to the scope of work. But the library itself was always going to have the retractable sliding doors that you see there, the automatic doors, and then what's referred to as storefront windows, the kind of thin metal-framed windows. Those doors and windows were significantly delayed. Again, it's a fabrication issue that was certainly beyond the city's control, but also beyond the contractor's control. Then unfortunately, when the initial round of partially fabricated doors and windows arrived, the manufacturer had fabricated them incorrectly, which resulted in yet another delay. Once, so we worked through those delays. We also worked through some delays related to the automatic doors themselves. That, if you think back a couple of months, we had all of the windows in place, but we didn't have doors. We had boarded up entries to both City Hall and the library. That was a product of a chip shortage that obviously renders the fabrication of an automatic door not possible. So eventually, all of that cleared, came in at the port, were able to get it installed. During this time, there were unfortunately two thefts of critical pieces of the door and window frames, notably the large arched parts over some of the windows. Unfortunately, theft, again, moves the refabrication to being treated as a new order. So those fabrication delays that we had for supply chain issues with the initial order, some of those elements had to be refabricated, and unfortunately, they went to the bottom of the line, the end of the line behind everybody else who was looking for metal fabrication. So that added a really significant amount of time to the project. Similarly, there's some metal fencing on the side joining the new building to the existing City Hall building and covering some of the utility elements. That metal faced similar supply chain issues in terms of fabrication. One of the other significant delays is, and we talked about this before, but the planters that were existing prior to the project's construction, namely the planters that are between today, what's the large concrete patio and the parking lot, between City Hall and El Toro Road. Those planters were originally, I would say, cosmetically reconstructed. So we re-landscaped them, we upgraded some of the irrigation, stuccoed them, put some caps on it, and we anticipated that being sufficient. Unfortunately, those particular planters, once we had done that cosmetic improvements, or largely cosmetic improvement, those planters began showing some signs of drainage issues, water leaching through the stucco, which was causing the stucco to discolor and peel off. Long story short, the drainage infrastructure that was assumed that existed within the planter, as evidenced by weepoles and things that would logically lead you to assume that there was drainage in there, ended up not being there. When we excavated the planters, it was really just not waterproofed at all. It didn't have any under drainage in it. That resulted in us needing to remove the plantings and the irrigation, excavate those planters, waterproof the inside, and then install an under drainage structure in them to prevent that kind of rampant discoloration in it. So those planters have been reconstructed, so what you see out there, the new plantings, the irrigation, that's all done. There's drains in there now. It's working perfectly so far. We've had some rain. We've had some, you know, constant irrigation on them, on the regular cycle, and we haven't had that same kind of intrusion. In addition to that, we obviously also approved a number of change orders on the project. So over the 21 months that the project has been in some form of construction, whether that's pre-construction staging-type things or into more proper construction, we've approved 45 change orders in that 21-month period, ranging from small to large, things like the doors and windows that we added to replace on City Hall. That was a change order. Some of them were as small as moving hose spigots around, things that, once the building started going up, we, you know, identified a problem or a future issue that we could solve with the change to the design. In addition to some elective improvements, there was some night work that was authorized to attempt to speed along portions of the process or minimize disruptions for City Hall. One of the things we were really concerned with was keeping City Hall open as much as possible, so there was a lot of work, especially related to the fire sprinkler system and drainage systems, that if we had done it during the day, we would have had to have shut down City Hall for several days. So rather than do that, we moved some of the work to evenings and weekends, that sort of thing. So while those change orders collectively added approximately nine months to the project time, much of that work was done while we were experiencing some of the delays I just talked about. So we were already delayed because we didn't have doors and windows. So yes, there was change order work going on, but I don't want to leave you with the impression that had the change orders not been approved, the library would have opened, you know, nine months earlier. We still would have had supply chain issues. We still would have had theft. We still would have had refabrication, all of that. The waterproofing issue that we didn't anticipate. The change order budget remains below what the city council has approved. So you've approved 31% of the project cost, plus the cost of the doors and windows on City Hall, which we treat as kind of related, but somewhat different. We still have approximately, we have just under 20% of that change order budget left. So we do expect that at the end of this project, we will be able to return some money to most likely the American Rescue Plan Act funding. That's the COVID relief funding. That would be available for the city council to appropriate to other purposes. At this point, all of the change orders have been constructed. What really remains are some punch list items. The punch list is, a punch list being like items that, as staff walked the project, we've identified as needing to be addressed before we can deem the project complete, sign off on it, and recommend that the city council find the project complete. We started off with a much longer punch list. We're down to a couple of smaller items, I think during this meeting, and I see them out there right now. There's a little bit of work on some of those punch list items, some of the cleanup going on. The larger issue, though, and the reason that the library isn't open now and probably won't be open for a little while longer, has to do with the concrete on the patio. Now, on advice of council, because this is an ongoing conversation with the contractor, I'm not going to get into explicit detail about it, except to say that the patio itself is not in a condition that staff is comfortable signing off on. The condition of the patio is not satisfactory in staff size. We have been in discussions with both the contractor and the manufacturer of the concrete. We are expecting some resolution in the near future. But suffice it to say, we're pursuing the legal remedies available to us. We obviously hope to have a voluntary fix made to the patio. The contractor has attempted to do some repairs to the concrete, but the condition of the concrete remains below what staff is comfortable signing off on. So that is really the elephant in the room, so to speak. Not to say that there aren't smaller things outstanding, but those smaller things are very, very minuscule. The bigger issue is patio condition is unsatisfactory. That patio is the only way to get to and from the entrances to the library. So we don't want to open something up only to close it again. And we're not quite sure what the ultimate resolution on that patio will be. So with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor. I'm happy to answer any questions. I hope these pictures were interesting to people. The library, like I said, is moving forward with filling the space and getting themselves ready to open, but I think we all have a shared interest in making sure that when we're open, we're able to stay open. Oh, and the other thing I'll mention, too, I think in the conversation about the restroom, there was some concern amongst certain members of the community that perhaps the library hadn't been consulted in the planning for this project. I can certainly assure you that they are. They have as much of an interest in the space as the city does. One of the change orders that we approved, actually, was making additional electrical modifications to meet their design intent. So you can see, I think, in some of these pictures, I don't know if I have... I may not have picked one, or you can see it explicitly. There's a little bit here. Down where the cursor is at the bottom right of the screen, one of the things that the library requested was in-floor plugs. So that was some of what we change ordered into the project to make sure that when they take delivery of it, they had holes in all the right spots. They knew where the TV was going to go. They knew where the computers were going to go. We made sure that the wiring and the conduit and all of that was able to be delivered to meet their specification. So they were very much involved. They remain very much involved. And just like the city, they're very anxious to get in the space. We're very anxious to turn it over to them. They're very anxious to move out of their cramped quarters in City Hall. But it is, at least from staff's perspective, very important that when we turn everything over, I would say when we give them the keys, but they already have a key to it. But when we give them the keys in the more, you know, ceremonial sense that we're all happy with the quality of construction that's out there. And right now, we're close to it, but that concrete piece in particular is just a hurdle we have yet to clear. So anyway, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay. Couple of members of the public have indicated an interest in speaking. You want to come to the podium, please?
Thank you. That's the best comprehensive report that I've seen on the library. But I do have a few questions, which hopefully you can answer. What about the staffing? I have heard everything from one librarian to two librarians. Are they going to use volunteers? I am a supervisor at the county, the city, the village library, and I get questions all the time. Are they going to use volunteers at the city library? And if so, how would we sign up with the city or with the Orange County Public Library? Do you know yet what hours it's going to be open? Will it be open evenings or weekends? Is there going to be printer copier? I see the corrals where they're going to have computers, but one of the needs that we have and we do not have in the village library is printer copiers. And we get a lot of requests for that. Two of the things that we feel helps set us apart in the village library is our huge collection of paperbacks and large print books. And I wonder if they're going to have very many of those or is it going to strictly be regular print hardback books? That's about it. We just were chomping at the bit. Want to go anything that we can, so any of those you could help. I appreciate it.
Did you want me to answer now, or do you want to take the other public comment?
Go ahead and answer as soon as you can.
Okay. I will answer as best I can with the representation that I'm not a representative of the library, but we've worked closely enough that I think I can answer most of these. In terms of staffing, I believe that they have three. I don't believe that all of them will necessarily be there at the same time, but I think the idea is to have two to three people on site at a given time.
Do you know if one of those will be a research librarian, or will they just be the regular?
I believe they're going to be library technicians and then an actual branch librarian, but I don't know for sure about the research librarian. As far as volunteers, my understanding is that they don't plan to, at least initially, but it's certainly something that, you know, I'm sure they'd be open to a conversation on. As far as hours, I believe their intent is to be open generally consistent with City Hall's hours, so 8:00 to 5:00 or thereabouts. There's no current plan for them to be open on evenings and weekends. There's some coordination that needs to occur on that. But there is also a formula that the library system uses to set hours at branches. And while I don't think we'll be using all of it, the 8:00 to 5:00 expands hours from what City Hall's library is open right now. I think it's open 10:00 to 4:30, 10:00 to 4:30. So it'll expand from that, but it won't expand to evenings and weekends. Printer copier, there will be a printer. I don't know if it's a printer copier. We can certainly ask, though, and let you know on that. I can follow up with you on the copier question and also on the research librarian question. And then as far as the collection, I don't know specific to paperbacks or large print books, but I know at least the conversations that we've had leading up to this, one of their understandings was that an area that they have some specialty in is being able to provide newer releases. And so I believe that they were looking at providing more of those newer releases and then playaways, the different kind of mixed media that they have. But I imagine, as with any library's collection, that it will evolve based on the needs of residents. And what you start out with on day one may not be what you end with on, you know, even day 10.
One of the real great things that they have is their library loan with the whole county.
Yes, and you'll be able to get your books shipped here as well. The functionality that exists at the library inside City Hall will continue, but you'll have a broader selection of materials on site. And then you'll obviously have the expanded computer kind of workspace presence there. So I can follow up with you on the copier and the research librarian question.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Chris, can you give Juanita the phone number of the person that we are dealing with in terms of what they plan to provide at this branch?
Yeah, we can definitely connect Juanita with the branch manager.
You can get it straight from them.
One quick comment. The large print is available, and they kept a number of them on their lucky day because lucky day are the books that just came out. And they, instead of you having to be online, every once in a while, they have them in there. If you happen to hit that day, and I have on several occasions, and the large print is available, but you can order that online if you have a library card when you do your selection for your book.
Thank you, Juanita. Appreciate the questions.
There's another question. Would you like to come forward, please? Chris, do you know the maximum occupancy or the...
I think they're depending not so much on books located here, but the fact that you'll use your, go online to your own account and order books. Although Chris will answer the number, I don't think the number of books is going to be huge because there's still, you can see by the shelving in there.
Yeah, Councilmember Moore, yeah, Councilmember Moore is correct. I think there are, one, two, three, four... I think there's three rows of bookshelves in there and then like a standalone bookshelf. I don't have a number for you, but it's not a, it is not going to be a large collection. I think what you'll find is probably more of the new releases and the materials that will cycle out and change more frequently. And then as far as the occupancy, I don't have it off the top of my head. I think there are, there's staff space for three or four people to be there. There's computer carols for seven or eight, I believe, and the occupancy is somewhere north of that. I... There is. I don't, April, you don't have the occupancy. We can follow up with you and let you know, but I don't, we don't have it off the top of our head. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody on the council have any questions for Chris? Okay, thanks for that update.
You're welcome.
We can move now, finally, to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are usually considered all at one time, unless a staff member or someone in the public or a council member requests that they be removed for additional discussion or information. The council can't take... Okay. Is there anybody who wants to take anything off the consent calendar?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor of passing the consent calendar?
Aye.
Public hearings? We have no public hearings. We come now to city... We already did 8.1 on the city council business. 8.2 is the zoning code amendments. And I'm going to ask Chris to give us a staff report on that.
Give me just a second. We're jumping around so much. I want to make sure I have the right information for it. No, it's fine. Okay, zoning code amendments. So much like item 8.1, this ordinance was presented on, and there was a public hearing conducted at the meeting on July 19. At that meeting, the council voted 5-0 to approve the introduction in first reading of the proposed ordinance. We also had just a broader presentation on it. If the proposed ordinance is approved for second reading and adopted at today's meeting, it would be effective in 30 calendar days. Want to note again that there were no changes made to the ordinance. This is the same thing that you looked at last month. For the record, the staff recommendation is to approve second reading and adopt an ordinance, read by title with further reading waived, titled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Amending Chapter 13.14 and Sections 13.04.020, 13.08.010, 13.13.020, 13.15.011, 13.15.015, 13.15.016, 13.15.017, 13.15.020, 13.23.030, and 13.26.070 of Title 13, Zoning of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code, and determining and certifying that the ordinance is exempt from the Californian... ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. I will be very glad to not read that again unless you would like me to. Lots of numbers. But with that, I'll turn it back over. There's an opportunity for public comments, and then I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this issue on our zoning code? There being none? Are there, is there anybody?
Second.
Been moved in second. Any council comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? It's unanimous. Come to item eight point three, the update for our housing element to our general plan. I think we've seen this one a few times.
Indeed you have. Okay, so.
Give us, give us a summary, if you would, of how you think it's going to fly. Okay, don't go through it all.
Depends on the temperature.
I was going to say the temperature, the winds, the seasons. Who really knows? This is the eighth council meeting that we've discussed the general plan housing element update at since May of 2021. We have, in addition to those eight meetings, there's typo on the second line there, but in addition to those eight meetings, we've done a variety of public review periods, the most recent of which was August 4th through today on the fourth revised draft, which is most of what's in your agenda packet today. The four versions have all been submitted to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD for short. We started submitting them in July of 2021, most recently submitted in March of 2023. Now, in those four letters, I wanted to point out that each time we have succeeded in reducing the number of comments, but as we've talked about previously, one of the frustrations is our reviewers have been inconsistent. And unfortunately, we will address findings and new findings unrelated to the previous findings will show up. So we are down to essentially one finding that they talk about over the course of two pages, but that's down significantly from the 15 pages of findings that we received back in July of 2021. In your agenda packet, we have a couple of things. We have HCD's finding letter based on that March submittal to them. We submitted it to them at the regular meeting in March, or at least at the March 22nd meeting, I assume it was the regular meeting. And then HCD provided a letter towards the middle of May with their findings. That's attachment B. Our response and our revisions based on that letter are included as attachments C and D in your agenda packet. Wanted to be very clear upfront that as is the case with the previous revisions, there is no change to the potential housing sites identified in the housing element or to any aspect of the site's inventory densities. All of that remain the same. What we've done to address their most recent comments, we've tried to distill down into a couple of bullet points here, but they wanted us to do some additional geo-targeting of programs that were already identified in the housing element, meaning that they, instead of us saying that we're going to provide certain programs citywide, they wanted us to drill down to targeting specific socioeconomic groups or specific income groups based on some sort of perceived need for, or perceived greater need for these services. So you'll see in the redline version of it that programs that already existed might now say that we're going to conduct certain kinds of targeted outreach in certain census tracts. Those census tracts were identified based on the analysis we were required to do related to our statutory obligation to affirmatively further fair housing, which is one of the newer elements of state law this housing cycle. We have also added two additional programs related to incentives. One related, I'm sorry, we've added one additional program related to incentives that relates to investigating and if feasible, implementing incentives that would cause private property owners to make energy efficiency improvements in apartment or cooperative units that exceed California building code standards. So again, not an obligation for anybody to do anything, just an obligation for the city to investigate the feasibility of trying to incentivize some of those improvements. And then if there's a path that we identify forward on that front, going ahead and implementing it. There's an existing program related to extending existing affordability covenants. So this really, right now, only applies to San Sebastian. There's an existing affordability covenant there for a certain number of units to be restricted for certain income groups over a certain period of time. We had already told the state that in an attempt to preserve housing stock, we would look at incentives that would incentivize that property owner to extend those affordability covenants beyond their current expiration. And again, if feasible, implement them. In talking with the state, in addition to extending them, they wanted us to look at incentives that could potentially expand those affordability covenants. So one way that you might expand an affordability covenant is rather than applying the covenant to 17 units, which is the current requirement, maybe they might be incentivized to apply it to 20 or 25 units. Or maybe they might be incentivized to apply it to different types of units, not just the, I believe, one and two bedroom units that they're currently applying it to. There's an additional program, much like the other two, that we've added related to investigating the potential for the city to provide opportunities for rental relief to residents at risk for homelessness. And if there are opportunities for us to do so, to look at implementing those in the future. Elsewhere, we've made some very, very minor revisions to quantified objectives, which is to say kind of, in the state's eyes, numeric goals that we'll use to assess our progress towards implementing these programs. We've added a couple more explicit references to numbers where they've asked us to do that. And then we've modified a couple of the anticipated timelines largely based on the amount of time it has taken to get this through the HCD process. All of these changes were provided on an informal basis to HCD staff. They're not in a position to say for sure thumbs up or thumbs down, but the feedback that we heard was encouraging. That said, we've heard encouraging feedback before, and then reviewers have changed. But I am cautiously optimistic to Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tim Hatch's point that this is hopefully the end of the line. There was no additional feedback provided, just a statement that they look forward to our resubmittals so that we can close out this process, which I view as favorable feedback. But again, I, to Councilmember Moore's comments, it's the temperature, it's the moon, it's the tides, one can never tell. But I feel good about what's proposed here today. Wanted to just briefly mention that in the entire SCAG region, which is comprised of 197 jurisdictions, right now, we're just over a little bit halfway with, with a little bit over 50%, 55.84% of jurisdictions with certified housing elements, but with another 87, including Laguna Woods, still without certification. Inside Orange County, of the 35 jurisdictions required to prepare housing elements, 18 have been certified, so very barely, just over 50% of jurisdictions have approval. There are certainly cities further behind in this process and dealing with more significant changes. The one thing that I, I will note again is I take it as a really good sign that HCD has not taken issue with any of our potential housing sites at any point in this process. After we made the initial justification to them, their commentary has really been on narrative and how we will assess our progress moving forward and less on whether there are actually viable sites identified, and that is a big deal. Lots of jurisdictions are still engaged with HCD on whether or not, not a site actually meets somebody's requirements or not. So our recommendation at this point is that the city council adopt a resolution titled, The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, adopting revisions to the 2021-2029 general plan housing element and providing direction and making findings related to adoption of the 2021-2029 general plan housing element pursuant to applicable state law. If we take this action today, it will very likely be resubmitted to HCD tomorrow. That will start a 60-day clock for them to review it. Based on previous iterations of the document that have gone to them for review, we anticipate them taking the full 60 days to review and on day 59 or day 60, getting a letter from them. If the letter comes back that they are okay with our housing element, in full disclosure, it won't be full certification at this point because they cannot certify the element until the rezoning is completed. The rezoning is in process. We'll be bringing an environmental impact report to you and implementing ordinances in the next couple of months. But that will be the last kind of official piece to clinch certification once HCD gives us the, okay, the document is okay, now you have to do this one particular piece of implementation. That's certainly our hope. The alternative is that they could provide more comments, but I'm hoping after this many rounds, they're all done with that. So at this point, there's an opportunity for public comment again, and then council discussion. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Juanita. Come and give us your comment.
I'm not sure if this relates. I, I tried to go through all the zoning things, and quite frankly, it was tough. But what it really is related to is density. As you are probably aware, the state in January of this year puts forth a civil code that said we have to allow room rentals. We have not done that in, on a big scale in particularly United, the co-ops never allowed it.
Not private property.
It was allowed at some in Third for the condos that were individually owned. But we're calling it the lodger program, and it has to be at least 30 days. And if it's annually, it's renewed. But it kind of goes, a lot of the rules that we've had have shown the number of bedrooms plus one as being the density that they're in. That's kind of going out the window. Although the civil code specifically says no more than one lodger per unit. And that's something that's up for debate now because we have couples and we have people with three bedroom units that want to rent out both of the bedrooms and things like that. So yet tomorrow, United's Document Review Committee should finish up the lodger policy and program, and it will be submitted to the boards in September. But in a way, it does affect the city. It's the density and with the rentals, et cetera.
Chris, I think you should comment on the difference. I think there's confusion there between density and.
I can certainly comment. The, long story short is the general plan housing element doesn't have any impact on that civil code section. State law is state law. I'm not explicitly familiar with the particulars of that, that law, but the general plan, the most significant changes that it'll make to zoning have to do with 17 specific sites identified in the city, none of which are within Laguna Woods Village. So there's no zoning code being contemplated at this time, or zoning change, or land use designation change that would affect densities with inside Laguna Woods Village. That's probably the simplest way I can.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and that's, that's certainly the, the general overall. I just think it's something that you need to keep in the back of your mind, that we will have rentals that we have never had before, which is going to be a population increase, et cetera.
Thank you. For those who haven't been paying close attention to this, what, what's happened is with this housing update, the city has been, the, the state has asked us to send in this plan that checks off like 50 different boxes. So we sent it in the first time, and they said, okay, we accept 25 of these, but on the other 25, we want you to do this, this, and this. So then we come back, it comes back to us, and we rewrite it, and we give them the updates and the specificities and the modifications that they think they require on those 25. And then they look at it again, and by then we have a new reviewer. And they say, well, you know, the ones you've sent us in, these, these ones are good enough to qualify, but you need to do more work on these others. And besides, the 25 that we approved before, we don't like four of those, and so now we want you to work on those four as well. And so we keep, it's, it's not like once it's approved, it's approved. It's like every time a new reviewer comes in, they take a fresh look, and what was reviewed by three people is no longer reviewed by, no longer accepted by this one, and it comes back to us over and over again. So we're hoping we're done now because they said, oh, we appreciate all the hard work you did, and we look forward to seeing it. So we look forward to their approval. Go ahead, Catherine.
Yeah, I know that you, you're limiting. I just got a simple question. And when you, you say you're going to have the zoning overview. My question is, if I were their property owner, and let's say it was zoned for commercial, and I decided to sell the property, would I be restricted from selling it as commercial property? Am I forced then to, to sell it for home development? I don't know what the, what the rules are in that circumstance.
Yeah. So if I understand your question, let me rephrase it to make sure I get it. If you're one of the 17 opportunity sites and you've got a zoning overlay placed on it that allows housing to be developed there, and you go to sell your property, do you have to sell it for housing, or can you still sell it for commercial? Is that?
That's my question, yeah.
Yeah, the answer is you can sell it for either. So the way that we've structured the zoning overlay concept is not that it's an exclusive use zoning overlay, it gives those property owners one more option for their site. It doesn't take away any of the options, it adds the ability to.
Okay, that was, that was my question. Okay, thank you.
But have we then disregarded our housing element here?
So there's, yeah, so it does present somewhat of a challenge. If a site is redeveloped in any significant sense for non-housing uses during the term of the housing element, there's a state law referred to as no net loss law. We talked about that during the earlier stages of the housing element as one of the reasons why we've overzoned. So instead of zoning for exactly 997 units, we've zoned for, or we plan to zone for 1,000 some odd units. That's to give us a little bit of a buffer in case these sites are redeveloped for other purposes. We don't have to go back and add sites in order to become compliant again. We have a cushion.
That's the problem.
Yeah, right. So we have excess capacity there, but yes, I mean, one of the things about this process is it doesn't require anybody to build housing. So if they go a different direction, it theoretically presents a future challenge for the city, but with any luck, that overzoning, which is about 20%, which is the recommendation from the state, that should give us sufficient cushion for at least a while.
Overzoning on the existing?
17 sites. Yes.
So we really, we don't have 997 sites on those. We have 1,000 something. Is that what?
Yes, you, so your arena allocation is 997 units. You have, in the housing element, you have essentially proposed rezoning that would allow for 1,196 sites, which gives you a surplus of 199 sites.
Spread among all of them.
Spread amongst all those sites. Yep.
And if, if you own a commercial site and you simply sell that site to another commercial owner who continues that commercial use, that really doesn't impact it because the zoning overlay is still there. That site, it only impacts it if the site gets redeveloped. Is that correct?
I'm going to say generally. I mean, these are all going to be a case by case thing, but, but there's nothing, just like there's nothing that compels somebody to construct housing, there's not, not anything that stops normal property transactions from taking place. The bigger fear is like, is, remember the state cares about realistic development opportunity? So if you've got a site right now that we've identified as realistic development opportunity, and it is redeveloped as a movie theater, it's probably unlikely before 2029, when the term of the general plan housing element ends, to be redeveloped again as housing, right? So that's more of where we would eat into the surplus zoning.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. Were you through with the public comment? Like, did I?
I believe we're through with the public comment. Is there anybody on the?
No.
Electronically? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I, to show you how capricious this whole thing is, we, at LAVCO last week, we approved the MSRs, which we never discussed. And I noticed the consultants gave their report, and they, they were all speaking to the fact that population isn't going up. In fact, even SCAG put that in their, what, what do they call that? Things for the day, whatever that little thing is they put out every day. They may, they even put a.
They even put a comment in there. So these numbers are totally illogical. You're not going to have this growth. We're spending all kinds of money on consultants to keep writing these things again and phrasing it in a way that, to meet some standard that seems to be obtuse, and it's ridiculous. We lose confidence when we have these kinds of things. It appears to me what we've done is we've created a bureaucracy who looks over this stuff, and they're busy doing their thing, and so, but it's costing all the cities to write and try to figure out what they want you to say about numbers that aren't even real in the first place. So the whole thing loses its, we lose our respect for unethical and illogical actions, and this is one.
Okay.
It's unfortunate.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to...
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Councilmember Horn abstains, apparently, she's not here.
She just stops.
Okay, 8.4, the Orange County Grand Jury Report regarding group homes. I just want to introduce this by adding to what Carol just said. The grand jury has asked us to implement a whole bunch of things regarding group homes, and our answer is, we don't have any group homes. To the best of our knowledge, we have never had a group home. We are unaware of any citizens in our community who are concerned about the proximity of group homes, and we don't plan to do anything about group homes. So...
And therefore, the report that we're about to hear is going to be very short.
The report is very short. The mayor stole most of my thunder here. I was just going to note that there is a legal obligation for us to respond to this report, regardless of how applicable or not we believe it is. In this case, the grand jury's asked all 34 cities and the county to respond. The penal code sets forth pretty specific parameters for how we're to do that. We have included both the report in your agenda packet as attachment A, and then the proposed response as attachment B. Last bullet on the screen there is exactly what the mayor said. We don't have them currently. We're not aware of them previously, and we don't really expect them in the future, but here we are. So our recommendation is that the council approve a response to the 2022-2023 Orange County Grand Jury Report. Welcome to the neighborhood. Our city's responsibly managing the integration of group homes. Authorize the mayor to execute the response, and direct the city manager to submit the response as required by applicable law. Again, there's an opportunity for public comment, and then any discussion the council wishes to have.
I wonder if he works with the other judge?
Okay.
The one we're reading about.
I'll take a motion.
I'll move it.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Horn is absent. Well, that was quick. I'm glad for that. We now get to 8.1, 8.5. Medium improvement? Yes.
Yes. Okay. So if you recall, the current capital improvement program, which starts this year and runs through 2034, includes this project, the, what I'll just refer to today as the El Toro Road Medians Improvement Project. That project, generally speaking, involves planting some additional trees and refreshing the landscaping on the medians on El Toro between Molten Parkway and Caius Norra. What we said in the budget document and in the capital improvement program is that as a precursor to staff preparing final design drawings and documents, we would bring before you a conceptual design, a tree palette, and a plant palette for those medians. Just briefly, so that we orient ourselves, the medians that we're talking about are outlined in red on the screen. This is the same map that was included in your agenda packet. They are generally speaking, the two medians in between Home Depot Center and Town Center. There is kind of a longer one that runs from Molten to the signalized intersection at Home Depot, and then a shorter one from that intersection to Caius Norra. Not all portions of these medians are landscaped. There are some hardscape elements. We're not proposing any changes to them. We're really talking about the areas that are currently mulch and some level of vegetation. We included a couple of pictures in your agenda packet as well. This is just showing the existing conditions, so this is showing the, a portion of the median that we would consider to be closer to Molten Parkway. This is the bigger of the two medians. One of the distinctions I wanted to point out just as we talk about this is that this median is really the widest median in the city's assortment of medians. If you're actually out there and you're walking on the median, it is good size. It is not small by any stretch of the imagination, and so with additional plantings, I think you're going to see a significant increase in greenery, just based on the ground size of it. Looks a little deceiving when you drive by it. Everything looks a little bit smaller, but this median is pretty chunky. The other median is shown here. This median, also very chunky. There are a couple of unique elements to this median. There are some electric vaults, access within the median, so there are a couple of elements in the median that we have to design around and not obstruct in a manner that SCE can't gain access to them. Just happens to be where the vaults were placed. So our general concept, and I think this is consistent with what we've talked about previously, was to propose landscaping that is visually consistent with the medians that were renovated on Molten Parkway south of Vio Campo Verde to the south city limits. The same tree and plant palette is proposed as what's out there currently. The plant palette that exists on these two medians right now is somewhat similar, but different than what exists on those molten medians. But if you're familiar with those molten medians, that's the exact same plant palette that we're proposing here, with one addition, which is the addition of a fourth tree species. We're proposing the introduction of carrotwood trees to the median, chosen for a couple of reasons, but most notably, they are fast-growing, they are evergreen, and they grow to a height that provides some variation with the other trees there. I'm going to get back to the subject in a second when I get the pictures of the trees up there. But I do want to point out that on those medians, as compared to what's out there currently, we're proposing a net gain of three trees. That's a combination of five new carrotwoods being planted and two of the existing tulip trees being removed. There are two tulip trees out there that we're advised are in a distressed state and will probably need to be replaced anyway. And so, given the desire to introduce some additional evergreen species there, we think it presents an opportunity to immediately add some more green to the medians. These are just the drawings that are included in the agenda packet. The top two drawings here, these are the individual medians and the proposed kind of planting schemes. You can see it maintains the two colors of mulch. There's a variety of trees, and the plant species, the shrubs, are all the same as what's on Molten. I think I misspoke earlier, by the way. The larger the two medians is the one closer to Molten. I think I was looking at a picture of the higher one first. The three images shown here are reference images, so these images are what we have currently on Molten Parkway. It's what the landscape architect used as reference points to design these new medians. And then on the second page, we have the different tree species. So the carrotwood tree that we're looking to introduce is on the far left. This tree, brand-new to the city, it would be complemented by the three existing tree species that are out there right now, the eastern redbud, the Australian willow, and the tulip tree. Of those three existing trees, the eastern redbud and the tulip tree are deciduous, meaning they drop their leaves every year. Both of those trees go through some color change. It's pretty apparent on the redbud, it goes from green to red and then drops. The tulip trees, as they mature, the distinction will be greater, but they'll go from a green color to a gold color and then drop their leaves. So right now, the only trees on either Molten or on El Toro that are evergreens are the Australian willows. So we're thinking pairing the carrotwood with it. Some of the trees will still change color, experience that seasonal variation, give passersby the appearance of true seasons, though we're in California. And then the eastern redbud, or, I'm sorry, the carrotwoods and the Australian willows would be green year-round. Wanted to talk about height for a second. So one of the intentional reasons we selected the carrotwood was it's fast-growing, so it should be able to catch up to the trees that are out there more quickly than if we chose something slower-growing. We didn't want the appearance that the newer trees were always going to kind of be lagging behind the existing trees. They will lag behind, but hopefully, they'll lag behind less. But in terms of height, the eastern redbuds are the smallest of the trees that are out there right now. Those get to about 30 feet in height maximum. The Australian willows get a little tall. Those can top out around 35 feet. And then the tulip trees, at maturity, which will take them still some time to get there, obviously, but at maturity, those trees can get up to 60 to 80 feet in height. So the carrotwood trees get up to about 40 feet in height, meaning that amongst those lower-level trees, there should still be some variation. In our experience, the eastern redbuds get a little bit shorter than the 30 feet. The Australian willows give the appearance of greater height because they get bushier. They can be pruned as minimally or as significantly as we want, but they tend to give the appearance of additional height because of the height of the canopy. And then those carrotwood trees, based on other carrotwood trees in the area and surrounding cities, we do expect that those will top out around 40 feet at maturity, which just gives some variation as you're driving along, that not everything is exactly the same height, the same shape, the same color. The other advantage to the carrotwood trees is they are available in larger box-sized trees. They're generally commercially available, so we do feel good about being able to procure those. And then our thinking is that, we've talked about wanting to do some additional tree planting in the city. If this plant palette is agreeable to the council, we would propose to use the same plant palette as we go through and add additional trees to, for instance, those molten medians, so that those medians would eventually have these four tree species as well, introducing, again, more of the evergreen color to those medians. So our recommendation today is to approve a conceptual design tree palette and plant palette for the El Toro Road Medians Improvement Project, westbound El Toro Road between Molten Parkway to Caius Norra, and authorize staff to proceed with preparing final design documents. If we get your okay today, we would go back to our landscape architect. They would prepare the actual construction drawings and technical specifications for this. At the end of that, we would have a cost estimate, but as we've talked about, cost estimates, especially these days, are, you know, not quite a shot in the dark, but they are highly variable to the contractor who happens to be interested at that moment in time. And so what we would probably aim to do is put the project out to bid, solicit actual quotes for construction, and then come back to the city council to talk about whether you're actually interested in going forward with construction, based on what that cost is. One of the nice things about this design, the work that we did previously, we did a lot of the really heavy lifting on the irrigation system. So when we renovated these medians previously, we did a lot of below-ground boring connect irrigation systems. We replaced irrigation controllers. It makes it a lot easier to treat this as primarily just a cosmetic planting effort. Not to say there won't be some irrigation work. We'll obviously have to extend and modify our drip system, but we're not talking about the same kind of prolonged exercise as previously. We're talking about a little bit of earthwork. There's some berming that would be created if you drive on the molten medians. I think one of the things that both staff and the landscape architect agree, give the two medians a very different look, is the medians on Molten have a little bit of a berm to them. They're a little bit humped in the middle, and these medians are graded stone-cold flat. So it just doesn't give you the, I think, the texture that you're looking for. You see less of the mulch. You see less of the plants at an elevation from the roadway. So there's a little bit of earthwork involved. There's some irrigation work extending it and realigning it, but it's largely a planting plan. So I don't expect this project to be extremely expensive. We, as we said during the budget process, we identified this as a project that is a good contender for some of the remaining COVID relief monies, using them on public works projects and roadway improvements in particular is possible. The other alternative is we have dedicated transportation monies through Measure M and fuel tax that could also be used for this purpose. So we would make a recommendation to you once we have numbers on construction, based on what that cost comes out to versus what's in the bank. But I view this project as very, very achievable. I don't think this is a particularly complicated effort. We just want to know that we're headed in the right direction before we put pencil to paper on the actual drawing. So I will turn it back over to the mayor, an opportunity for public comment. I don't know if anybody is so interested, but...
Okay, do you need a motion, or do you just need a consensus of the council?
No, I would like a motion for the recommendation on the screen.
I'll move the medians.
Before we do that, I mean, you can move it, but just, I don't know if there's any public that wants to comment.
Does anybody have anything to say about our plant palette? Okay. Does any...
I do.
I do, too. Go ahead.
Lean forward to your microphone, please.
I'd like you to go back to the slide that shows the slope on the north side there. The slope there is a ugly slope.
You want to lean forward to your microphone?
Noel, would you lean forward to your microphone?
I'm sorry, the slope up there, as you drive by, has a lot of just loose plants, they look like. Is that within the city's jurisdiction as to improving that look?
It's not unless we obtained a landscape easement from the property owner, but that's not city property. Our property stops at the back of that sidewalk.
So, and do we know who the owner is?
Yes.
Who?
They're related to the shopping center, the town center. No, not the animal hospital. Town center, the, they're a property owner affiliated with them.
From the, across the street.
No, no, from the medical building in the Ayers Hotel area. It was, that parcel was part of...
Okay, okay, up on the hill.
Yeah, up on the hill, right.
All right. That is a very ugly, unkept look. If you're going to try and improve the balance, in my humble opinion...
We can certainly look into opportunities there.
Maybe just check with them and see if they would like an image.
I think beauty's in the eye of the beholder because I don't find the natural, that doesn't bother me at all. I saw that on the carrot tree, and that's kind of the carrotwood. We have a lot of them in Third. I don't know if you have a lot of them in United or not. They are very popular. They do have a nice look about them, and I have a real quick story. It's kind of strange. I have a property in Oceanside, and for some reason, the HOA, a small group, decided to take out all the trees. They decided that the trees were causing problems, and I bought the property in the meantime and told them I would not want them to take the tree out. We had a difference of agreement. And I asked to see their data, how they came up with this. They had no data. They didn't know anything about the water. They didn't know anything. I still have the tree, and they complained that carrotwoods were a problem, so I called the city of Oceanside, and they have over 200 of them in the city and use them all the time. So carrotwoods, it's interesting that you would select the carrotwood. I have no problem either.
Thank you.
Okay. Will somebody move the recommended action?
I think Councilmember Horn moved it, so we'll just give a second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Aye.
Aye. Any. All opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, last item.
Thank you.
Employee compensation on benefits.
Lots of items on the agenda today. This is a two, kind of a two-part issue. I broke it down separate in the agenda packet, and I'll talk about each individually here. So by way of background, all of our full-time and part-time employees receive a monthly benefit allowance, and that monthly benefit allowance varies whether you're full-time or part-time. So we technically have nine authorized full-time employee positions. One of those is filled on a part-time basis, the other nine are myself and the rest of our full-time staff. So full-time employees receive $1,000 a month, and part-time employees receive an allowance of $800 a month. That allowance can be used for certain things covered in the city's Section 125 benefits plan, namely health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, a health flexible spending account, dependent flexible, or dependent care flexible spending account. And for full-time employees that were hired prior to January of 2019, up to $500 of it can be taken as taxable compensation. Full-time employees hired after January of 2019, or in or after January of 2019, or part-time employees are not eligible for that taxable compensation. So one of the things, and I put some numbers in the agenda report, but I'll talk about it at a higher level. One of the things that has been happening over time is that health insurance costs have been rising. We all know that. We were recently provided with employee health insurance costs for the 2024 calendar year, that is to say, the plans that the city makes available to employees who choose to opt into healthcare through the city. Looking at our current employees' selections, if they stay with their current health plan, a majority of the city employees who take health insurance through the city will see just the individual premium for themselves increase by about 15%. That's obviously on top of increases over... 这显然超过了任何几年以来的 increases。$1,000 或 $800 是为了 employees 们同时也为城市提供一个 ceiling。所以， 只是来 contrast， 有些城市支付健康保险的 actual cost， 比如一个 employee 和妻子， 或者他们支付健康保险， 加上 vision 和 dental， 或者那个 actual cost。我认为一个城市非常谨慎的 cost control 技术， 是提供这个 allowance， 让每一个 employee 都有同样的费用， 例如， 有些 employees 通过城市获得健康保险， 有些通过妻子。有些人选择 dental 和 vision 护理， 有些人不同意。但这个 monthly benefit 允许， 这个 $1,000， 自从 2006 年开始， spending power of $1,000 在2006 年是 vastly different than the spending power of that same $1,000 both in current days， but also looking ahead to January when the new benefit calendar year starts。$800 是基于这个 $1,000。所以， 如果你想 $1,000 一个月作为 40 夜工作日， $800 一个月是作为 32 夜工作日的 32 夜工作日。所以由于 rising costs， 由于这个 benefit 不断增长， 我们建议在 January 开始增加这些 allowance， 从 full time employees 起， 和960 月的 part time employees。我们通过这个 $1,200 数字 是通过， 在 individual health care premium 账单上， 最高的一个， 我觉得是 1151， 然后把它减到下一个百。所以那 1,200， 如果 somebody 选择了 11 health care plans 的最贵的， 他们就不会有其他的 benefits。但是系统的工作是， 他们可以从 payroll deduction 中选择那些其他 benefits。所以它们会从他们的支票中出来。现在， 相反， 不是每个 employee 都会使用他们的 $1,000。尤其是如果一个 employee 通过妻子获得健康保险， 健康保险， 你可以用这些东西获得的健康保险， 那是 employees 的 monthly cost 最高的。如果他们把它放在别的地方， 因为 dental insurance 和 vision insurance 的成本和 federal 限制， 如何贡献健康支出的花费或者 dependent care flexible 贷款的费用， 通常会扣除一部分 allowance。这是系统的工作。但理论上， 他们有权获得 $1,000。他们只是选择使用一部分， 因为对他们来说更有效。获得其他方式的保险。所以如果我们要做出这些改变， 城市每年最大的 new annual cost 是， 在 again， 一个 12 个月的 time， 不是在 January 开始， 会是 $21,120。这个数字是它最低的， 因为 employees 中的人员数量有限。currently 有 nine employees who qualify for the monthly benefit allowance， eight of which qualify at the higher level， and one of which qualifies at the lower level。这个 amount 不会逐年增长， 即使 health insurance 的成本会变化， 但我在这里想做的就是告诉 employees， 城市的 monthly benefit allowance 11 health insurance plans 都可以。如果你要为 family members 保险， 那可能是额外的。如果你要 dental 和 vision， 那可能是额外的。但我不要 employees 做决定哪些 health insurance plan 是适合他们的， 只是基于成本。这就是 monthly benefit allowance 的想法。这个第二个部分是我们的 employee assistance 稿。所以这是我们为 employees 提供的东西。这是 voluntary confidential service。但是 idea 是它提供 stress management 资源， counseling 资源， 其他精神健康和 well-being 资源， 但也是 life management 资源。意思是城市对 employees 的关心在 employees 的健康和 well-being 上很重要， 因为一个健康的和 fully functioning employee 是一个更 productive employee， 是一个更高 performing employee， etc。所以现在， 这个 employee assistance 稿已经很久了。我们现在与 Aetna 合同。它现在已经延长到所有 full time 和 part time employees。所以 again，nine employees 现在可以参与这个程序。这个 monthly premium 是 $1.74。我们有 Aetna 合同， 在2026年 December 开始。所以 $1.74 是固定在两年内。interestingly， 我们刚刚进入了 employee assistance 稿， 这导致了成本下降。我以为 $2.14 一个 employee， Aetna 能给我们 $1.74。所以它不是 expensive 稿， 但是它的方式是， 对于那些 full time 和 part time employees， 他们收到 $1,000 或 $800， 在他们申请 health insurance 或 vision insurance 的时候， 我们从 $1.74 减去。所以我们减少 $1,000 乘以 $1.74 一个月， 然后剩余的 balance 是他们可以分配给其他服务。所以， 这个今天是我们的 interest， 在 staff 级度上， 在 extending the employee assistance 稿给所有 employees。最简单的方法是， 我的 contention 是城市对 employees 的健康和 well-being regardless of how many hours they work。现在， full time employees 和 part time employees eligible， 但是我们有一个 third class of employees， 被称为 limited part time employees， 他们工作不超过 20 个小时每周。我们 currently 有 four 个， 他们是 receptionist， 我们想延长这个程序， 但是那些 employees 不会获得 monthly benefit。所以我没有必要从 $1.74 出来， 除了他们的 paycheck， 但是， 鉴于我们作为 employer 的 vested interest， 在提供这个程序的时候， 我不建议。所以我想说， 在 January 开始， 城市会吸收 employee assistance 稿的费用， 给所有 employees。这是 $1.74 一个月， 乘以 13 employees， 这会导致城市每年的成本为 $271.44， 假设 employee 数保持一致， 在2026年 December。不是 significant line item， 但是 nevertheless， 我想今天讨论这个。所以， 你的 agenda packet 里有一个 resolution， 会实施这些改变。再次， effective January 1。nothing 会改变当前 benefit cycle。benefits 是12年 basis，